The meeting at 7:34. According to the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by Northham and may be recorded by other local media. Can you get stand for my flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I was surprised to see you. I didn't think you were going to make it.
I did make it.
You got everything done you needed to do?
I did, yes.
Excellent. All right, so we are starting with a lot of this, select board executive session minutes, quite a bit of it. So, Mr. Wallner, do you have?
Madam Chair, do you want to begin with board member reports?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I didn't know that was ahead. Okay, yeah, we can do that. Mr. O'Leary, any board member reports?
I do. First of all, the historic district commission met last night with the developer of the property that's going to be across from the library and next to the police station, Bruce Wheeler.
Oh.
And just to reaffirm what Mr. Wheeler had presented to them a year and a half ago in relation to the design layout and those things that would impact the historic district, and the historic district commission did reaffirm their support and approved the plans as presented by Mr. Wheeler.
Great.
So that's progressing and moving forward. Just a point with Mr. Hall, who was the chairman, told me last night because they're talking about October putting out some deals for people who may be interested in doing it, probably breaking ground in April, and then it takes about a year. So another year and a half away. But again, it's 50 units, over 55, so it'll be a good project. And again, there's affordability aspect to it, which is terrific, and there'll be some North Reading efforts.
Excellent.
Board of Health is going to be meeting on the 14th with Mr. Greenberg from the Recycling Committee on the proposed bylaw. They said the Board of Health meeting shortly after our previous meeting here, and of course they were a little bit caught off guard too because they hadn't been consulted to date, they hadn't been consulted about, and they would be enforcing primarily the enforcing agent agency. So they're looking forward and set up a meeting specifically to meet with Mr. Greenberg, they get a proposal, and then they'll weigh in as to what they believe this is a peaceful, not peaceful to do, and so it's on the 14th. Hillview, again, is putting out request proposals for course improvements, golf carts, and the management. So they're very busy right now, and I want to acknowledge the administration and the town council for facilitating the RFPs and review of those, so if they could get busy a little. And finally, a conversation with our vocational school representative, or if this vocational school representative, the school project is moving forward. They've already started clearing the site. The issue in relation to the local conservation commission has been resolved, through the court system, has been resolved, and they are moving forward with the project. In addition to that, they're with additional funding, approximately $20 million through the most recent budget proposal with the legislature to help augment the project. So it's moving forward, they're very excited about it, and we'll steam ahead.
Excellent, thank you. Then Hillview, are they still looking for to open the box? Do you know, is there any talk about this?
The current vendor that's there is talking about opening a restaurant, not so much about the restaurant there. That's it, that's it.
Great.
No additional timeline that I'm aware of at this point.
Does anyone else need to go?
There was an issue as to what is the seating capacity for a restaurant or a pub down there as opposed to overflow for upstairs, so they're working through those.
Mr. Wallner?
Yep, just briefly, the Forest Committee is meeting with our consultants on September 12th, from 9 to 12, if anybody wants to attend. It's to, basically, it's to launch of working on the Swan Pond area and mapping and others of that nature. So it's open meeting, if anybody wants to attend, but it's basically just to get ourselves going and to set up what the activity is going to be for the next four to five months surrounding that activity, that initiative. The Tax Aid Committee with the new member Gail Manning, our first meeting will be on September 20th, and the goal is to research what other towns are doing to help out seniors, especially from the means testing point of view, to help them out with tax issues. Gail Manning has already put together a number of research articles that I have to read through, and so that's my homework before I get it, but very excited to work with her and to work with Deb, and Mary Ann, and Kay to work on that as well. And then today, just wanted to thank the DPW. Martin's Pond had an oil spill, modest one apparently. DPW came right down, Martin's Pond Committee let you know about it, they came right down. Apparently it was dissipated by the time we got there, but thanks for your very good action. We really appreciate it, and we really appreciate it so much. So thank you. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Studo, do you have any board member reports?
No, no, no. Maybe. I've been out on the loop for a couple of weeks, so.
Okay.
No remorse.
Thank you. Mrs. Manupalli?
Thank you.
I have no reports either. I have, the Community Impact Team is going to have their Guiding Good Choices program starting up, offer to North Reading families and beyond, free of charge. It's an interactive, fully programmed that offers science-based skills and practice to help parents, grandparents, and caregivers raise strong kids who make positive choices. Dinner is included, strengthening bonds with your children, increasing protective factors and decrease risk factors, prevent eating substances and high-risk behaviors. So that will be starting, it'll be Wednesday night, starting October 4th through the 25th, and there is a link, if you go to northreadingma.gov and go to the Community Impact Team pages and events, you'll actually not only see that, but you'll see so many other things that they offer, some really great programs. And that's on Sunday?
Town Day?
Oh, Town Day.
That's the 17th, I believe.
Oh, are we going to do that?
I don't know.
We have a few events coming up. I don't know if we're going to do that later or now, because we have.
But to do the events now, well, people are awake.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well, there's a few. So there's on Saturday, September 9th, that Ipsa Trevor Park is Black Brown Market, which is from 11 to 3, that's second annual, so that was a good show last year.
What was that again?
It was second annual Black and Brown Market, and it's at Ipsa Trevor Park at the gazebo.
That's sad.
And that's from 11 to 3 o'clock this Saturday, this Saturday. And then we have Town Day, which is September 17, that's a Sunday, and that's 11 to 4, and that was a great showing last year. I know the Commission on Disability will be there, there will probably be a few other departments that will be showing up committees, so it will be there as well. And that's, of course, Ipsa Trevor Park. And then on Saturday, September 23rd, is the Apple Fest. I don't know the time of that, but I think it's just normally during the day.
Yes.
So three big events during the month. Didn't read it taken down.
No, that's good, no, I just.
Yeah, might as well.
Slipping in while we can.
All right, thank you. So, meeting minutes, I believe we were, I'll retable them.
June 26th, you said, right? We're not due today, yeah?
And July 17th.
Okay.
We're going to table those.
Okay. So we just acknowledged, can you give me to read this?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to acknowledge the release of the following select board executive session minutes. Hang on, now, it's going to be a long. 11-6, 2017, Section 3 Civil Rights, 11-6, 2017, Section 6, 104 Lowell Road. 9-18, 2017, Section 6, Real Estate. 9-5, 2017, Section 6, Real Estate. 8-21, 2017, Section 6, Real Estate. 7-24, 2017, Section 6, 104 Lowell Road. 7-6, 2017, Section 6, 104 Lowell Road. 6-19, 2017, Section 3 Civil Rights. Acknowledgement of the release of the following select board executive session minutes, subject to any necessary redactions under the public records law. Include 11-6, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 10-16, 2017, Section 3, Outstanding Litigation. 9-18, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 9-5, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 8-21, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 7-24, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 6-19, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 6-1, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 5-23, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 5-22, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. 4-3, 2017, Section 3, SSBC Litigation. Acknowledgement of review and continued non-disclosure of the following select board executive session minutes. 11-6, 2017, Section 3, Fire Union. 11-6, 2017, Section 3, DPW Union. 10-16, 2017, Section 3, Fire Union. 10-2, 2017, Section 3, Fire Union. 9-18, 2017, Section 3, Fire Union. 9-18, 2017, Section 3, Health Insurance. 9-5, 2017, Section 3, Fire Union. 8-21, 2017, Section 3, Fire Union. 7-24, 2017, Section 3, Fire Union. 7-24, 2017, Section 3, DPW Union. 6-19, 2017, Section 3, NUV Agreement. 6-19, 2017, Section 3, NRAS. 5-22, 2017, Section 3, Health Insurance. 4-24, 2017, Section 3, Collective Bargaining Library Union, Fire Union, Health Insurance. 4-3, 2017, Section 3, Fire Union. 7-17, 2023, Section 3, Open Meeting Law. And 8-7, 2023, Section 3, Open Meeting Law.
Good job.
Thank you.
So that's not a, that's.
No votes required, just a disclosure of the board's previous action.
Great. So next order of business is a proclamation for Carmen Dechara, who is our oldest resident in North Reading. She will be 100 years old on September 14th. Do we have any, is there anybody on Zoom or?
I don't believe we have any attendees here, but they certainly can open it up if there is anybody on. There will be a recognition, I believe, at her home on her birthday on September 14th at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, I believe, and I believe we've all been invited.
The Boston Post Kane Committee, which is like sort of an adjunct of the historic committee and people who are involved with those sorts of things, you recall a few years back, reinstituted Boston Post Kane, and as a result, Carmen Dechara was recognized as the most senior member of our community.
There, you said, you said.
And has been for the last several years, which we're happy to see and announce, and she's going to be celebrating her 100th birthday on the 14th at her home. There'll be a small gathering there, and we've, some representatives of the community and the Boston Post Kane Committee are going to be present along with Representative Jones to acknowledge her 100th birthday of Carmen Dechara, and if that was appropriate to bring it to the board's attention, and happy to see that we're going to do something about it.
Thank you for that. Before I read the proclamation, is there anyone else who'd like to say anything? Yes, Mrs. Manupalli?
Miss, happy birthday to you. We're happy that you're a member of our community, and we're happy to have you around for the 100 years that you've been around. We're happy that we're able to make this proclamation. It's something fun and happy and exciting for us to be talking about here, so congratulations and many more years with us.
There is a motion.
Oh, there is a motion?
Again, again, when Mrs. Manupalli was chair and myself, we were present when the Boston Post Kane was presented to her. It was an exciting day and a fun event, and we look, and again, she's common at the parade every year too, so that's great.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, so we have a motion?
Yep, Madam Chair, I move to declare September 14th, 2023, as Carmen Dechara Day, and to read the attached proclamation.
Second?
So I have a motion, and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Senator.
Mr. President, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Aye.
Mrs. Manupalli?
Aye.
And the Chair is aye?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to?
No, 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 please, yeah, just want to make sure we do.
All right. All right. Whereas Carmen Rose Marie Rouo Dechara was born on September 14th, 1923, in the West End of Boston, to Michael and Frances Rouo. And whereas Carmen spent many years in East Boston, she learned to cook from her loving grandmother, and this became her passion. She worked for Liberty Chocolate until the war came, and then started to work at General Electra in the Headlight Division, where she was supervisor. As was the case for many women during the war years, she waited for her childhood sweetheart, Nicholas Dechara, to return home from the war, and her dream came true when they married and had three wonderful sons. And whereas, as her children grew older, Carmen went to work at Zayer's, I remember Zayer's, in the Wellington Plaza, Medford, where she was an office manager for 25 years. When she retired, she moved to North Reading to be with her sons. She received the Boston Kane Award in November 2021 as the oldest citizen in North Reading, and now, therefore, we, the Select Board of North Reading, do hereby proclaim September 14th, 2023, Carmen Dechara Day, and urge all citizens of North Reading to join us in wishing Carmen her happy 100th birthday. Congratulations, Carmen.
Very nice.
And the passes are out, we all need to sign it. All right, next order of business is wastewater project update, and I'll turn that over to you, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I will actually turn it right over to the Director of Public Works, Joseph Farisi, who is with us here this evening, also joined by Matt from, Matt Corbin from Wright Pierce, our consulting engineers, and our Finance Director, Laurie Galvin. He has a brief presentation that, I'll just introduce it by saying that, you know, in response to the board's feedback, inquiring about the timelines for the wastewater project, and, you know, whether or not there was the ability to proceed in a fashion other than requesting funding at the October in-town meeting. Mr. Farisi's done quite a bit of investigation, and he'll go through a presentation that'll give you an update, hopefully, in a pretty short order.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
So here we are again, talking about wastewater projects.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, before, before we get.
Oh, right.
Mr. Wallner will not be, will actually be backing off of the table and not participating in the discussion.
Yeah, there you go.
I will be accusing ourselves. If any votes taken, but reserve our rights to speak as citizens.
Okay, thank you, Citizen Wallner and Citizen O'Leary. Thank you for not leaving me here alone. Table. Okay, Mr. Farisi.
All right, so Mr. Phil, who is going to watch the presentation. It's not many slides, so just a quick update, if you will, but I'd just like to sort of start off with a little bit of a recap of the project area. It's been a little while, and there might be others in the audience that, you know, are not as familiar with the project, so we will start with a couple of that. So the project consists of in-town wastewater collection system, so there's about seven pump stations that are located along Main Street, Route 28. There's also Concord Street pump stations as well, and there is one off of 12, Lowell Road. And we will have one most likely, or primary pump station, in around, near the stop and chop area that will be able to convey out-of-town wastewater. If you go to the next slide, you'll see a force main that would go from that stop and chop location, continue up 28 a little bit, onto 125, and then we have a few routes as we enter 114 to sort of consider. There's a route continuing straight on 114, a force main all the way up to, in the Lawrence, City of Lawrence, intercepting at least to the greater Lawrence City District. And there's also an option to go into North Andover's gravity system, and an option or a possibility to go into Andover system. So we have three possible routes there. But all routes will get us to the GLSD, and the wastewater will be treated there. All right, so I just want, as I'm on this slide, I want to show you what is known as the Mass DOT project area. So there's a road improvements project that Mass DOT is doing. You can see it circled in yellow, it's within the 114 area. So that area, you know, will require a little bit of, you know, design, a final design, so that we can be ready for inclusion in Mass DOT's project, when they bid that out in, I think it would be spring of 2025, construction starts, June 2025. So, you know, there's, there's some decisions to be made how to get through that area with either force main or some gravity connection perhaps to North Andover. So just, just being right back as we go forward. So the next slide talks about a project timeline for consideration. So there's two things that, you know, we're concerned about. One is being eligible for SRF funding, which, which is a pretty significant savings when it comes to the interest being charged, the money we may borrow for the project. So there is typically on a 20-year repayment period at 2% interest, something of a 30-year payment period would be a little bit higher at 2.4. But being eligible for that as opposed to market rate interest is significant savings. The part of the project that would be SRF eligible is construction costs, not design costs, not cost to purchase land for pump stations, not legal fees, construction costs, and construction administration as well. So we have another cycle coming up that would require a few things for the town to act upon. One would be having construction appropriated, construction funds appropriated by June 30 of 2024, and being in a position to submit an application October 24, along with 90% design plans. In other words, you know, we have to submit, you know, the proper forms and information about the project, but also have that submission accompanied with design plans that are pretty much nearing the final design. 90% design would take some time to get there. We are preliminary design for most areas of the wastewater system, except for that Mass DOT area, where we have, you know, final design with some, you know, ability to make some changes as we determine the final routes, but we're ready to go in that area. We do need to get going on all of the other areas in-town and the remaining out-of-town areas beyond the Mass DOT area. So we want to be able to start design, final design in November 2023, to keep our ability to file or apply for the next round of SRF funding alive, and so that's a date to keep in mind as we go through the next discussion points. So Mass DOT, as I talked about already, is an area within 114 that they are going to do some road improvements. We are trying to get through that area to get to the GLSD. We need to determine that route. We need to submit final design plans, which we are pretty much have those ready to go. And then we need to really sign an agreement with Mass DOT, be at a point where all things have been worked out and we're ready to sort of commit to the project bidding and get into the plans inspection, getting into the construction portion of the project, which is start June 2025. So what we would need to sort of put ourselves in a position for, you know, completing final design for SRF funding, well, we have a $3 million estimated cost for final design efforts, you know, going forward. Looking at what we have for grant funding, we do have a contract that should be fully executed through Mass Works that tolls $350,000, $100,000, $100,000 typical Mass Works grant for final design plus a state airlock at $250,000. So that contract tolls $350,000. That will be administered through a Mass Works grant. There's another federal community progress grant that is in the amount of $1.5 million. So I'm working on putting in the paperwork, the forms that would be required to get access to that grant, plus there will be a requirement to issuing request for qualifications for design engineers and be able to present all that procurement that was done for selection of a final design engineering firm to the grants manager, and then access for the $1.5 should be given shortly after that. We also have some available funds that were uncovered, so a balance still in the original appropriations of $328,000, $326, I'm sorry. And also, we have some funds that are still, that are uncovered for design, but we will probably release those and use those towards final design. So all total, we have $2.665 million of the $3 million that we estimate that we need for final design purposes. So there's a little bit of shortfall for final design, that's $334,000. And there's also some initial funding that will need to continue with IMA work that would need to get into agreement with either Andover or North Andover, but also some operational cost development projections, so what is it going to cost to run a wastewater system? And so putting all those costs together, we rounded basically to a $500,000 request to be pulled in a $3 million plus effort to do final design and other planning for the wastewater project. So I do have enough slide, I'd like to summarize, you know, some of the needs and those needs and timelines again. So we want to have consensus to use the $2.665 million grant funding and available prior, you know, funding, using that for final design. We have an October 16 timeframe that will sort of coincide, I think, with a select board meeting or potentially some other, you know, special town meeting that could appropriate those, well, that will coincide with the next line, which is a request for $500,000 in additional appropriations, October 16th. And we have, I guess, an ability to sort of push off a construction request until, you know, closer to that June 2024 date. So if we were to sort of look at March-April timeframe for a special town meeting, we could, in essence, ask for the construction funds after completing final design, and we can go through a lot of other processes and information on, you know, the final outcome of the sewer design and its, and its conveyance to the GLSD. And then finally, you know, there would be a debt exclusion with valid vote that would be needed following any town meeting that happens March-April 2024, so we figure giving it a month, April, May, 2024. So that's, that's pretty much a, you know, timeline of, of funding. So that's, that's pretty much a, you know, timeline of, of funding needs for the project as, as I see it. Have discussions with engineering firm right here. So if there's any questions, something to be
Thank you, Mr. Puth. Thank you. Mr. Gilberto?
Not a question, but just sort of to state it another way. We were approaching this project as far back as October of 2021, when town meeting approved approximately $3 million for initial design work for analysis of the potential economic development growth and also the final design for the 114 portion of the route. We had, you know, proposed an approach where we would seek appropriation of both the final design funding for the rest of the route, so everything except Route 114. So everything in town, everything on Route 125 up to Route 114, you know, if that's the final route. Everything from 114 to the plant, all that design was going to be sought. At the same time, we were seeking the construction funding. So we were sort of asking for both at the same time. And what we are finding first is that that puts a lot of pressure on the timeline for the town to make a decision. And one thing we've heard from a lot of folks is, you know, it feels rushed. Seems to be an urgent decision that we need to make. We've, you know, described what the pressures are, Mass DOT and the SRF funding. But by taking an opportunity to separate the final design and taking advantage of a significant amount of federal and state grant funding that we've been awarded, awarded for designing, would allow us to not only pursue the design, not need to, you know, consider the construction appropriation yet, perhaps address some of the questions that we have heard over the, you know, the past year with regard to development projections, the route, other issues related to the project. This gives us an opportunity to try to address those in a, a less urgent manner while still staying on track to utilize SRF for our project and the significant reduction in interest rate that it brings. So, you know, I want to just recognize the Director of Public Works for identifying this as a potential strategy. It certainly is a change from the approach, but I think it gives us tremendous opportunity to try to proceed and, and address some of the concerns that we have heard the community without having to make an all or nothing decision right now. Well, stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do see Mrs. Manielli's hands up.
Mrs. Manielli?
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Madam Chair. Could we go back to the slide? I just want to clarify just a couple of questions about what we are talking about. Can you go back, go to the map? In before this, right, right here? The next page, I think. So the, the 114 portion here that you have circled there, that's not in North Running, right? That's in Andover, right?
That's in North Andover.
I'm sorry, North Andover. Sorry, you said that. So we would want to have the capability there though for our, we have to get in on that. In other words, we have to do something to make sure that we're a part of their construction. That's where I thought we were accelerating our decision-making on this.
That's correct.
So what, what, what do, what is our involvement in that, I guess? If you could just put it in layman's simple terms, they're, they're definitely working on a reconstruction project. Why do we need to get involved in it? So that it's large enough to cover our needs or are they, you're going to incorporate that? Or do we need a yes vote on the project to be able to let them move forward with that? I'm just, I'm trying to understand timeline. I'm slightly confused about it. That's all.
All right. Well, I'll try to say it, I guess, as simply as I can. I mean, there is a a route through there that we would like to take to get to GLSD, but Mass DOT's project, once it is finished and paved, and the road is paved over, we will not be able to install our wastewater pipe in that area for five years. So, you know, we're trying to be able to get into that that route that traveled way through 114 before they wrap up their project, basically. So one of the best ways to do that would be become part of their project. And it would simplify, you know, the work that would be required to, to make it happen at the same time they're doing their project. So we're trying to get within their, in their bid documents, vice versa, their own plans, the specifications that they would add to their bid documents in time to so that, you know, we're, we're ready to go when they are.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask a couple more?
Of course, yeah.
So in that, is that an SRF project as well for North Andover?
It can be if we're in a position to finish the design for all of, you know, the project area, submit in this cycle. And so I guess that's one of the reasons why we want to, you know, at least go forward, make use of all of the, you know, the significant grant money that we have, go forward with final design and be able to submit 90% of plans come October 2024.
So if we're able to do this and we're able to, you know, get the vote of approval of that and or appropriate maybe some ARBA funds towards that, are we able to have that once the design is completed? Are we able to solicit funds then? Or will we need the approval of the project? Because I also thought this whole time that we really can't solicit any of those funds, SRF funds or any of the available state or federal funds until we can show that the town's in favor of this project moving forward. Does that mean we could ask for it ahead of time and then come back to the town and say, we've been able to get this funding to be able to complete the project? Or how are we going to proceed now? Does this, am I making sense in my question? I, I just think timeline and how to do it is what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I hope I understand it and I'll, I'll try to answer it, but if I am misunderstanding, please repeat your question. But I think that based on the grant funding that I've seen or I've read the agreements, I've talked to the, the grants administrator, there's no requirement to have town funding authorized to access those funds. There is, there is a, a match, a 20% match for the 1.5 main federal grant that we would have or be able to count when incorporating the Mass Works $350,000 grant into our final design project. So in other words, the 20% match is covered by the state Mass Works grant of $350,000.
What about the construction part of it though? Because that's the biggest, kind of the biggest price tag. So once we've designed that, are we then able to solicit more, you know, available grants or funding to pay for rather than having to ask for debt, you know, override or anything like that?
So I, I think it would be some additional Mass Works grants that would really relate to construction as opposed to the final design, which this one does now. So, like you, any more information?
Madam Chair, if I think I understand the question correctly, through you to Mrs. Manielli, in order for us to maintain the SRF funding timeline, which would now be almost exclusively for construction in this area we talked about, we would need to begin design basically immediately, finish that design by October of 2024 in order to maintain our eligibility. And we would need to appropriate the construction funding by June 30th of 2024. Is, is that the timeline you were looking for, Mrs. Manielli?
That's, yes, that's very helpful, but for the, the appropriate and the construction costs, are there other funds available that we'd be able to have paid for the construction portion of it? That's really my question.
Sure, I understand.
So is there anything matching for the design? And so we've already put up money. The town's already said yes to putting up money for design, right? That, we took that out of JT Barry funds, right?
Correct.
So, so we already have put money into design, but now we have to do kind of final design through this route, right?
Correct.
So now then we're going to move on to construction phase and that's the huge price tag.
Correct.
Would there be federal or state grants or other funds available to cover it?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. The, the biggest funding source we anticipate is a construction-grade Mass Works grant. You know, we submitted an application this year, knowing that we were probably unlikely to be funded yet, but sort of trying to get the state to recognize that this project is, you know, potentially in the queue. What we have found is Mass Works wants us to have a private development partner in order to submit an application. The private development partners want to know that we're ready to proceed with the project and have a construction appropriation in hand. And so, as I, you know, unfortunately, as I think I have had to indicate in other conversations, and I know you know, Mrs. Manielli, but for the, for the public, you know, we, it does appear we do need to take that first step in terms of the construction. I think we've been very fortunate in terms of the design. We benefited from a significant chunk. I think it's going to end up being more than half of the final design cost between what we're discussing this evening and what was approved two years ago. So there, there certainly are those opportunities out there, but our understanding of all of those resources, they, they do want to see an appropriated, an appropriation in place for construction before we're really be able to get in the pipeline for the significant funding.
So but it's going to really be up to us then to pay for, in other words, unless we get a private funder?
Yeah, I think we will, we will need to show, you know, both for the SRF and for the Mass Works, you know, program that we have that we're having appropriation ready to go. You know, I'll draw a comparison, the Mass School Building Authority, with that project. So we've been able to go to the town with either a grant agreement or a draft grant agreement in place. And we know what the reimbursement rate is likely to be for the eligible costs. And we, you know, are seeking appropriation for that. The other funding sources that we've identified, they don't have that level of guarantee prior to the appropriation taking place. We will need to take that first step. And I, I think we've been honest with the community, you know, about that and about what the cost could be if we don't obtain those, those grants. But we are taking into account the lower interest rate that the SRF program would provide us.
Okay, I see. All right. Thank you.
Oh, is that Mrs. Manielli?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Did Vincenzo, does Mr. Studo have any?
Yeah, um, thank you, Madam Chair. So that funding we got from a federal grant, that came in af, that came in after we approved the design in 2021, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And just because we're talking about timelines of, you know, what the town has to do before grants even come into play, is it something we could have asked for before we approved the design?
Madam Chair, through you, we, we could have requested it, but we would have had to demonstrate a commitment to appropriating a share of it. And at that time, we didn't have the Mass Works funding that we now can match it with.
So the reason I want to point that out is because it's, it's the same train of thought, right? That has been said from when I was first presented with the project that, I mean, it's much smaller, even though percentage-wise it's large, but from a dollar perspective. But those funding opportunity and those grants that now amounted to a good chunk, they weren't available to us because the town hadn't made the decision on the design. You know, again, I mean, and maybe it's not apples-to-apples comparison, but I'm just trying to get to the point that it seems that we approved the design, we got the ball rolling, then we kind of said, hey, look, we did our part, help us out. So just something to point out that I've heard over and over, well, we don't have any guarantees on the funding. How do we know there's even any available? We need to first get that calculated and you know who you are out there that keeps asking me, even though we can't answer it. And I guess this is a perfect example that it just, the way those programs work, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gilberto, is that you cannot put the cart before the horse, meaning you got to show these granting authorities who have limited dollars to spread around that they, you cannot expect a commitment if you haven't made a commitment. So I just wanted to point that out that, you know, we made a commitment for the design, we asked for some money, we got it. I'm not saying that will happen on the big construction of the 126 million. I think that's what you just showed on the slides, whatever's left over. But it's just to show that, can we at least put that question to bed of, well, I want to see potential grants before I even, you know, start talking about whether or not this is a good idea, because it's, it's just not going to happen. And I think right now we're, we're seeing a prime example that when the town takes initiative, others respond. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Studo. Mrs. Haraldt?
Yes, through you to Mr. Coraci. It seems that by November you have to start working on final design. And I, and I assume that that means a final design that would be the 114 route as opposed to going through Andover and that strays from North Andover? So you may, am I, is it correct that you would have to decide on a route before you did final design?
Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in the October 2021 appropriation from the Salatano land, we included the cost of a final design for Route 114 route. Specifically because we were concerned about the timeline for the state construction project. Now that time, that timeline has slowed a bit and I guess slipped a bit. But I think we're talking months and not years at the moment. But we, we've already, and I think we publicly stated so in either the fall or winter of 2020, I think it was winter, this past winter, 2023, that we were going to proceed with that final design for the 114, even though we continue to have discussions with the communities of North Andover and Andover. Because of, because A, we had the appropriation in place to do it, but B, we didn't want to fall behind. So that section of the route, the DOT, so-called DOT section of the route is, I think, is final design complete, Mr. Corvett?
Yes, it's just a matter of which route or the gravity.
So now we have to, you know, will we do gravity or force main pipes in that route? Either of those scenarios have been designed. Again, need to be clear. We are still in conversations with the communities of North Andover and Andover about whether those are, you know, the best routes for those communities. But we, we have proceeded with that design and actually concluded it.
So I guess what I'm not understanding is, how can you do a final design on three routes?
Madam Chair, so we did, did a final design on two options for one route over the past year, I guess, or less than a year. You know, we anticipate concluding the discussions with the communities of Andover and North Andover and identifying what that final route would be. Again, our preference, our hope is that it would be that 114 and 125 route that we've talked about. Again, we can be very transparent then. You know, that there are concerns in the communities of Andover and North Andover and we were trying to work through those concerns. So to answer the question, I don't think we would final design three routes. I think we would finish, I think we would finish the conversations with those communities and then design to the outcome of that.
And does that affect the drop dead start your work November date? In other words, according to the timeline that I picked was on one of these slides, the design effort must begin November of '23. That's like seven weeks away or whatever. So in the next seven weeks, will there be a route decided then, Mike?
No, there'll be concurrent discussions with the communities and work on the design happening. And keep in mind, we, we do not have final design for any portion of the in-town. for any portion of the in-town system, right? We haven't done any appropriation of that. So there's an entire collection and pump system within North Reading, the route for which I don't believe is in dispute at this point. Main Street, portions of North Street, Park Street, Lowell Road, and Cogger Street. That's going to require an appropriation that we don't have for design, regardless of whatever the route ends up being, or for that matter.
So then, given what we just know, if you don't have the final design and you don't have the appropriation for it, for the portion that's within the parameters of North Reading, the $500,000 that I'm assuming you're going to ask for on October 2nd, that will go along with whatever funds are in your bottom drawer, totally, what, $3 million for final design? Does that final design figure, does that include the final design for the portion of this wastewater system that will be within North Reading? Or is that strictly, okay, thank you?
It's the whole thing, yes.
Okay.
The answer was yes. I don't know if you could see him shake his head.
The answer is yes, yes.
Oh, is that Mrs. Haraldt?
Thank you.
Mr. Studo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think we should also go back to something that Mr. Corisi mentioned and Mr. Gilberto, that because of the time constraints and the fact that, you know, it's going to be the next, it's the next agenda item, I think we should strongly consider using $500,000 from ARPA for this. And, you know, I know we're going to take votes, I imagine, or maybe, I'm just looking at the schedule, but I think that's something we should consider, you know, whether or not, you know, we should just appropriate the $500,000 tonight from ARPA for that final design and call it a day. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's much better. Okay, thank you. Kate, is your hands up, Kate? Mrs. Mani Pelli?
Just a quick question. I know we're going to get to that in the next segment, but I just wanted to ask if that fits within the parameters that we've been given for expenditure of the ARPA funds before they take it back? Is that only a portion of this and a design portion? Is that something that we're not going to have clawed back from us if we use it for this project when it's not going to be completed within that deadline? Because we also, you know, we also could consider utilizing some. Never mind, just, I'll just keep to that one question. Is that something, even though the project won't be finished, is that acceptable? Madam Chair, if I could ask Mr. Gilberto that, I guess.
That's a great question, Mrs. Mani Pelli, thank you.
Madam Chair, through you, the uniqueness about this particular potential use of ARPA funding is that it fits in, actually, category for infrastructure utilization, which is one of the four major categories that are identified. However, in reality, the way the Finance Director would likely account for it is we would report it under the so-called lost revenue field, where it would become available to be spent, and we would be able to, as long as we get into a contract by December of 2024, which Mr. Corisi's intention is to get into contracts by the end of this calendar year. So we'll be a year ahead of that for work that would be completed, in all honesty, by October of 2024, well ahead of the deadline of December of 2026. It seems like it certainly checks all of the boxes, and we received no indication, particularly because we'll be using it for that revenue replacement service option, that we would be subject to any sort of clawback. And in fact, because we'd be getting in contracts so quickly, it probably would be one of the least likely Mass Funds to be clawbacked. Does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, just more pointedly, I think, what I want to ask you because of my understanding of what the ARPA funds are accessible for. We can use ARPA funds for design, designing an infrastructure project. Is that, that's my question. In other words, this is only for designing. It isn't far completing an infrastructure project or constructing infrastructure, but we're allowed to use ARPA for designing a project? That's my question.
Sure. Madam Chair, I'm going to defer the Finance Director's issue. Answer better.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you. Yes, because we're using our ARPA funds, because it's under $10 million as revenue replacement, there are very, very few restrictions on how we can use those funds. We cannot use it for debt service. We cannot use it for, you know, to put away in a stabilization fund. They even say you can't use it for anything illegal. But other than that, there's very, very few restrictions. So if we had received over $10 million, we'd have to fit into one of the four categories. But because we are under the $10 million and we're using it as our revenue replacement, we can pretty much use it for any capital project. So design definitely fits, and as Town Ministerina has said, it's along the lines of infrastructure, so it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mani Pelli, anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Studo, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, also, I'd like to add that what this also would do, irrespective of how the funding comes to get it done and give us more time, is that it would allow the newly formed, you know, wastewater project committee to have more time to get the word out because everyone involved is really enthusiastic, but the bigots, I don't want to even call it fear, but anxiety, was that there would not be enough time to get all this information out. And I think that what this does is allows us to be more strategic rather than the fire drill. And that's also been one of the complaints, right, throughout this whole process, that we haven't figured out a way to give ourselves more time, and this is a pretty, you know, great way. Thank you, Mr. Corisi, for coming up with it or thinking of it. So I just want to add that there are many benefits to it. One being that, you know, being in the home stretch and having 99% of the info that we can get out, I mean, this just gives us a little bit more time than we thought we would. Because even in our best projection before this idea was that we would hold a special town meeting some point in November before that deadline. And even then, I talked to members of the committee, even in our first meeting, there was like, you know, it's a lot of work to squeeze in in seven weeks, eight weeks, whatever that was. Especially for, you know, volunteers that have not given up all their free time and sleep time like myself. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out that it gives the community more time. And it seems like that's the biggest commodity right now.
So to be clear, Mr. Studo, you're speaking about us not having to go to town meeting and getting the appropriation from the ARPA funds is what's going to save you time and be able to get going with the committee? Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
In general, whether it's ARPA or October 2nd, I'm saying that this is a great idea of where we can still do what we need to do to meet the deadlines and not miss out on the Mast DOT kind of piggyback, but gives us more time. I still do think, though, that, you know, we've gone in circles about what the most time-sensitive use of ARPA would be, and I mean, this one kind of fits in that category. I mean, I don't know if anybody else agrees with that, but, you know, it's kind of, kind of is time-sensitive because I still haven't seen any other project besides the Culvert they're working on that, you know, we need funding for in the next six weeks.
All right, well, that discussion's coming up, so we won't, we're going to try to not mingle them together.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Mani Pelli?
I'm sorry, I just want to, I want to understand though now, so now we're not, we're considering just now parsing it out to, back to just design phase? We're not moving forward with the warrant article and town meeting? Is that, am I hearing that right?
Madam Chair, through you, I mean, that is an alternative that's available to you, yes. You could move forward with a town meeting vote for that, the $500,000 that we forecast we would need in addition to the existing appropriation from last, from two years ago in the grant funds. That could be taken up at the October town meeting, and we have a draft of a warrant article on the draft warrant. Or you could elect to proceed with funding this through the use of ARPA funds.
So we would just pass that over if we wouldn't need it anymore?
Madam Chair, through you, if, the way we, sure. That's okay, we structured the agenda in a consultation with the chair that, you know, should that be the direction that we decide to go using ARPA funding? We have an indication in the form of a vote by the board this evening. I think we could reliably take both of the warrant, the wastewater-related articles off of the October 2nd town meeting warrant. But if we're not ready to make that decision, we could certainly leave the one for the final design portion on it. I think my hope would be that we'd be able to fund it utilizing free cash, if it came to that. If for some reason we don't have certified free cash available, we do have funding available in the form of other available funds. But, you know, again, it does seem that ARPA is a really strong fit for the use of funding. Again, I know that's going to be a further discussion, but we come to that conclusion, and there's a vote of the board to utilize that. I think you could take both of the sewer-related articles off the warrant for the October annual town meeting, and you would not need a special town meeting until, again, early to mid-spring next year.
So what Mr. Corisi wants us to consider right now is that $500,000 request from ARPA to get the design done?
Madam Chair, through you, that and a consensus to, you know, continue with, continue on the road of final design using the balance of the appropriation from October of 2021. That's not a town meeting action. That's more just an approach that we would be taking based on available funds.
Okay, so for right now, I would be asking Mrs. Mani Pelli and Mr. Studo if there was a consensus to move forward.
I think the question is, is there, right, for under this agenda item at least, are we, you know, is there consensus on the board to not request the construction funding on the fall annual town meeting warrant? Or for that matter, at a special town meeting this fall?
Right.
You know, if we get to that point and the answer is okay, then we can go into the, do we want to, it's funded with ARPA? Do we want to fund the remaining design with ARPA? We could do that under the next agenda item. The answer is yes, and then the next agenda item after that, we don't have to, we could take those warrant articles off.
So a step in, so for right now?
It's more a concept of doing design only, you know, this fall, the next year.
So we need that consensus right now? Before we move forward to, am I?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay. So I will pull Mrs. Mani Pelli.
You better skip over me from now on while I process it. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Do you want to repeat it again?
No, I mean, I, I think there's been so many stop and goes, stop and goes, stop and goes on this. I really appreciate it being on the town meeting floor. I'm listening to my colleague, and I understand where Mr. Studo is coming from on it. I appreciate the fact that this, but this, it feels like we're putting the brakes on again, you know, so where, where it looks. Moving, you know, full speed ahead, then we're braking. Moving to full speed, it just seems like we're, we need a, we need a concise plan. And it, to me, should be tied to, you know, funding, how we can, how we can make these deadlines to get our hands on some of this outside funding rather than having it papered ourselves. But it sounds to me like what Mr. Corisi has here makes a lot of sense in terms of doing the design work here because he already has funding sources available and to already complete that. He's just asking for one small piece of it. And we do have the availability. I'm thinking out loud, I'm sorry, Mr. Gilberto.
No, thank you.
I feel like we're stop and go, stop and go, stop and go. We really need to just take as many concrete steps forward as we can.
Mr. Gilberto?
But I don't know, I don't know, Mr. Gilberto, I understand what you're saying, but I also think the committee can roll it out by town meeting too. But you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. This is really straightforward in terms of a vote. Wouldn't it make it better for us to have that yes-or-no vote at the town meeting?
Well, here's how I look at it. We're not voting on the project, right? So I'm reading, you know, I'm reading the board article. You know, 11A is for the actual whole thing, so that, we're definitely not ready for that, in my opinion. More just because the calendar has become a burden. But I think it's a matter of, to your point, Mrs. Mani Pelli, we need to be, we need to make some bold decisions as a board to show the people helping us with these designs that we're serious, because, you know, I don't know if we even, let's say we stuck with one board article, like we need 500 more, then it gets, you know, we've had this discussion behind the design. We got more money than we thought we would. We're trying to just close the gap to it. So to me, though, again, it's something where, you know, we'll have this discussion next, but the board can decide whether or not this falls under the, you know, urgency of ARPA. I'll tell you the truth, I hope that in the next segment we have, we once and for all incorporate all this money so we can stop, you know, being like a relative that won the lottery ticket that everybody's asking for money for. So, you know, just call it a day. This is, you know, kind of getting annoying at this point. But I'm just saying that it could be a good use of money. So I agree with Mr. Corisi. I like the idea because it made sense to me. And again, as you always like to say, Mr. Pelli, but I'm only one, but it made sense to me that it just, what the money should be used for, infrastructure, was one of the biggest checkmarks.
Yes.
And I can point that out, like, you know, the actual 900-page Congress bill, I think they say the word infrastructure more than even, you know, Mr. and Mrs. So I just feel like it's a natural fit. But, I mean, if we want to go to town meeting and, again, appropriate 500 more, hopefully we would get it, and we can take it from there. But either way, you know, not that I want to put on the brakes, but if I'm looking at it from the perspective of the wastewater committee project that we set up, it from the perspective of the wastewater committee project that we set up, that's not going to work unless we have more time. It just, you know, and I see your point, Mrs. Manu Pelli, but I'm just telling you honestly that if we, if we were told, right, we're meeting on the 13th, you got three weeks to piece this all together and get the info out because we're going to vote on sewer on October 2nd, I'm going to tell you that's not possible.
So Mrs. Madam Chair.
Yes.
And we were moving forward with October town meeting, with or without the wastewater committee, so that's what I'm saying. We have all, I don't really care about the people that we're, we need to impress for, making them understand we're serious about the design. We've already hired them, we've already given them money, so they already know we're serious, obviously. What I'm concerned about is not having the town's imprimatur to move forward and maybe soliciting other available funds knowing the talent behind the project. What I'm also concerned about is hearing from all the people, I'm hearing, we need this, we need this, we need this, but they're not showing up at the meeting, so we needed the wastewater committee to publicize it so that all those people that are saying, we need this, we need this, we need this, do come to the town meeting in October to vote in favor of it. That's my concern, is we really need the favorability vote on this at the town meeting. That's what I'm saying, Mr. Studo, we weren't moving forward. We had this already scheduled. I don't think the wastewater committee's availability should impede that, essentially is what I'm trying to say. And it is on the town meeting for a vote in October. So I know you're saying this is two separate things, but we were looking for the town's approval of this in October.
I mean, I felt like we never, though, decided concretely whether it was going to be a special town meeting or just this. I mean, I'm still in the camp that I don't know how you don't have a moderator that ends this meeting before we're done. This is going to be, like, unless people are going to stay out until 2:00, 3:00 AM, I mean, we have a discussion on sewer and town meeting on October 2nd, I can tell you, we don't make it past the article before the end of the night. So like, I was never, you know, we kind of put it as a bookmark, but, I mean, we never had a full discussion on what, I mean, maybe we have a full discussion.
I agree with you, there's been a lot of work done, and there's been a lot of meetings, and there's been a lot of informational sessions, and there's been a lot of talk about it. There's been a lot of public meetings about it.
That still doesn't mean that we won't have a four-hour discussion at a town meeting just on one article, and it's not going to end. I'm not saying that's not healthy, but if it was just that article, then it would work better.
We had a 30-minute discussion on asking people to increase the senior work write-off, so that's what it is. That's what it is, Mr. Studo.
I mean, I don't think that, I think for something this big, just being thrown in as number, article number 11 in a random town, like a standard-issue town meeting, I think it's not doing it justice. My understanding is with the school project, it was, you know, the town shut down until it was approved. You guys weren't even talking about turning on the lights, so on this, for this big, we're going to just put it in as article 11A or B, and that's just my opinion. I think that this calls for its own special town meeting, and it kind of, you know, that's why I don't think we're pumping the brakes, I think we're just trying to be more efficient. But that's me.
So, Mr. Gilberto, will you please clarify what consensus you want us to come to right now?
Sure.
Step one.
So step one would be to delay a decision on funding the construction portion of the project, and proceed now directly into contracts for final design of the project, including concluding discussions with communities in North Andover and Andover about the route, the State Department of Transportation, so doing all of that work, using available funds from 2021, 1.850 million dollars in state and federal grant funding, and an additional $500,000 in either town meeting appropriated or ARPA funding. The first question is, do we just go forward with the design at this point and bring a fully-designed project back to a special town meeting in the spring? That's the first decision.
Okay.
To speak to the timeline, I know there was a conversation about the October annual town meeting, the board was also asking us to look at, could we do it any later in October as a special town meeting?
Right.
We did look at that, I think we bought ourselves two additional weeks, roughly, to a potential October 16 date that Mr. Parisi had up there. So those, to me, are one and the same, whether it's, we can decide at a later point whether it's the annual or not. The bigger question is, are we comfortable with proceeding directly into design using available funds and not seeking a construction appropriation, seeking that construction appropriation in the spring?
Okay. Does that change anything for you, Mrs. Manu Pelli, after that description of what we're coming to a consensus for? Or are you still feeling the same way?
It's definitely clear, but what's the benefit of doing that?
Madam Chair, through you, I think the biggest benefit is probably for the community as a whole, that we'll be able to have more solid information regarding the design, have resolved issues with regard to the route that remain, and bring that packaged up while also allowing for further outreach by the established wastewater project committee. I think that's what it gains us. We have, I think appropriately so, because of the urgency of the DOT project timelines tied to final design to construction together. And I think the board is aware that in order for us to go out and seek federal funding right now, we've had to actually parse off the design separately and present them something that's a more manageable dollar amount, and that's what they responded to. When I've said to the congressmen or senators, we need $130 million for this project, they say, can't really assist, it's too big a request. But when I've said to them, could you help us with the design portion of the project, it's less than $5 million, I get a much more engaged response because it's a much more attainable number. So now we're looking to build off of that and say, let's proceed toward the design using, again, almost $2 million of state and federal funding that's out there, not that we wouldn't need to seek from the taxpayer, to then bring back to the taxpayer a more fully-designed project, and along the way, do additional outreach. Perhaps answer questions that some folks might still have about the cost of operating the sewer enterprise, or, you know, about what development, you know, might look like. And we have, I think, some really useful and important information about what development along Main Street and Concrete Street could look like, but we do, we still are getting questions about that, and so maybe this time gives us the ability to address those. But I do think what it does give us, probably more than anything, is time, you know, for the community as a whole to go through the discussion, and, you know, I think, I think we're really, even though the work happened months ago, I think we're only now sort of focused on a project that does not involve settlements at this point.
Right.
Sort of taking that fresh look at the community at this project without that as, you know, what was, you know, really complicating and distracting from the discussion as a whole. Gratefully so, I mean, it was going to impact a lot of folks, I get that, but I think what it gets is this time to answer one.
Okay, Mrs. Manu Pelli, that was your benefit answer. Do you still have some questions, or do you think we can reach a consensus?
No, I think Mr. Gilberto answered it, because I was really going to ask what would be different in the information that's already been rolled out to the public.
Yeah.
And it sounds like there may be some difference based on a design, a fully-designed project.
Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, I think what I hope is that we'll have a fully-designed project with, you know, an agreement in place to the extent it can be absent at town meeting vote on a route, an exact route, the types of pipes in the route, gravity, sewer, and also, you know, a model that we can show folks about the cost of operating this enterprise as it ramps up. You know, there's going to be a day one when there may only be a handful of connections. We've received a lot of valid questions about how are we going to fund that? And this gives us, and Mr. Parisi's done a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah.
To try and look at that and be presented, we haven't really delved into that and had some discussion, and I think it gives us the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. I mean, I know for myself, I think the more answers we have for people, the better off we are. What frustrates, what I've seen frustrate people is when we can't give them answers. So, I mean, this seems to me that when we go forward, we would have more answers, we would have more details to share. Mrs. Manu Pelli?
No, I don't.
I just, I want to make sure you've gotten all your questions answered.
I have, and I disagree with you, Mrs. Gonzalez. I've sat in on the.
That wouldn't be the first time.
People get their answers, people get their answers to all the questions. I think the presentations have been excellent, informative, concise, clear, you know, once they were done, I don't agree with that, but I do understand the request, and I do understand separating it out and getting this portion completed. I disagree that the information's been, people's questions haven't been answered. I haven't experienced any of that.
No, no, I think you're misunderstanding what I said. I don't, we have.
I hope I am.
Any question that we could answer, we did answer, but there were a lot of things we didn't have answers for, and that's what I'm saying. If we can have more answers to people's questions, we are better off. And it sounds to me like this is going to do that. We're going to have more precise answers to give.
We can have a design. It's going to be the same roof, right? It's not going to be anything different, but the design's going to be different. Maybe we'll have more firm figures on the cost.
Yes. And it sounds to me that, Mr. Gilberto, like, what you're saying is if we separate it out, we might have more opportunity for grant money than if we're presenting it as a whole.
So we're going to, through you, Madam Chair, we're going to continue to look at every available grant funding opportunity along the way, and, you know, certainly the more information we have, short of an actual vote to proceed with the project and construct it, the better positioned we are to advocate and seek grant funds. A hypothetical, but I think it's worth pointing out, we haven't been able to get the attention of property owners for that private development partner yet, but maybe with a design in hand, we're able to do that. You know, maybe when we show them that we got the attention of the federal and state government to fund more than half of that final design, we get their attention, and people see that this is serious in terms of the town's interest. And it also allows us, to those who are concerned, to say to them at a town meeting, here's our partner. I'm not, I can't responsibly sit here and commit to that.
Yeah.
But we're making progress versus right now, where we're sort of limited into what we can do. We're never going to have all the questions answered, you know, this is not like building a school where we can point to a design and say, that's what it's going to look like when we're done. We can point to the pipes and say, that's what they're going to look like, but we can't tell you what's going to happen exactly on Main Street, although we have projections for it. So I guess, you know, to sum it up, you know, we have a project where there are going to always be unknowns, this additional time will allow us to maybe reduce the number of what those unknowns are.
I think you said that better than I did. Mr. Studo, do you have anything else to add, or do we want to go ahead and?
All set, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Manu Pelli?
No, all set, thank you.
Okay, so do we need to have a consensus? Are we, do we want to take this?
Madam Chair, through you, I think consensus at this point in the discussion is important. Voting would take place under the next two agenda items.
Right.
So for example, a vote to obligate ARPA funding.
Right.
Would take place under the next agenda item. A vote to sign a warrant that does or does not include wastewater-related articles, that those are another opportunities, but I think it's going to be hard to get through that unless we sort of think we know where we're headed up on this.
Correct. So, Mrs. Manu Pelli?
I'm going to move it forward with what's been recommended here.
Okay. Mr. Studo?
Mm-hmm.
Just a good question.
Yep, yep.
How do we then take up a vote on use of ARPA funds if two of our members aren't going to be able to participate specifically on this? Are they going to be allowed to take a vote on use of ARPA funds?
That's a good question.
Madam Chair, through you, I'm not town council, and I'm not the Ethics Commission, but.
Yeah.
My understanding is that there would be limitations, I'd have to advise the members to, you know, to be cautious with regard to specifically discussing the use of ARPA fund for wastewater, and for that matter, a warrant article related to wastewater, but that doesn't preclude them from participating in a larger discussion of other ARPA-related matters or other warrant articles, or for that matter, voting on a warrant for a town meeting. That's my understanding from talking to town council.
Mr. Studo?
To be clear, Madam Chair, through you, I actually asked a question, what's the vote I'm looking for?
Yeah.
How do I take my direction? And it would appear that the particular issues related to wastewater, it would be a majority of the three participating members, so.
Would they be able to give us input as citizens?
They are always welcome to provide input as citizens, as long as they're making clear that their input is not as members of the select one. And I think they've been both told that, though.
Okay.
Off the point.
Mr. Studo, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to echo, I think Mr. Gilberto mentioned that, that because two members cannot speak on that particular vote if it's taken, on whether ARPA should use, I would only be comfortable if the three remaining members that can speak were all in favor, because then even if five of us were speaking, it'd still be a moot point because you still have a majority. So it has to be that, that's the only way I'm comfortable, is that if there would be consensus by the remaining three board members that can still speak on the matters of wastewater. You know, I just want to point that out, because then it would, you know, then it wouldn't matter, right? Because even if five people are speaking, if three are still in favor, you know, you're still, it wouldn't have mattered anyways. So I just want to point that out, but that's the only way I'm comfortable doing it.
Okay, I think Mrs. Manu Pelli wanted to make sure that we, go ahead, I won't speak for you, go ahead.
Yeah, but that depends on if the things that I want to use the ARPA funds for, of course. I mean, let's be honest, but I was only thinking of that because I think you, it's such a, to me, this is such a monumentally necessary project, and I think that, you know, we have talked about use of ARPA funds in our prior, I don't know, two, three, four meetings, about how they're one-time funds, that really, this seems to be such a suitable purpose for, you know, use of those funds, in my opinion, because this is going to have an effect, an impact on the town's well-being.
If I could stop you, Mrs. Manu Pelli, but right now, I just want a consensus on moving forward, and then we'll discuss the ARPA.
Oh, I thought we already did that, okay. I thought, I'm getting confused, I thought we.
I hadn't said, I hadn't said anything yet, and you had asked something else, yeah, so we hadn't moved on yet.
I'm sorry, Ms. Manu.
So, but I agree, so I think we do have a consensus to move forward.
Okay.
All right.
All right, bye.
Okay, so now we can move on to, actually, I was going to take things out of water and go ahead and do the appointments before we go to the ARPA discussion.
Madam Chair, through you, these would be roll-call votes with the appointees named by the members by roll call, and I'm sure we'd be looking for recommendation from the I can take the first one, the Capitol Improvement Planning Committee, I'm not the liaison to it, unless somebody else wants to speak to it, but I believe these are all reappointments at this point for longtime members of the Capitol Committee, including Mr. Foti, who has expressed an interest in remaining on as a citizen.
Going to start with capital improvement?
That's okay, Madam Chair.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm going to appoint the following individuals to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for terms to expire on June 30th, 2024. Donald Kelleher, Michael Galaberto, Michael Connolly, Joseph Foti, Jeffrey Friedman. I'll repeat that.
Second.
So I have a motion, and I have a second. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Kelleher, Mr. Gilberto, Mr. Connolly, Mr. Foti, and Mr. Friedman.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Mr. Kelleher, Mr. Gilberto, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Fodi. I don't know the fifth person.
Mr. Connolly.
I can't hear.
Connolly.
Mr. Connolly.
Oh, Mr. Connolly. And Mr. Connolly.
Mr. Studo?
Mr. Kelleher, Mr. Gilberto, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Fodi, Mr. Connolly.
And Mr. Walner?
Donald Kelleher, Michael Gialberto, Michael Connolly, Joe Fodi, Jeffrey Friedman.
And the chair is Mr. Connolly, Mr. Kelleher, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Gilberto, and Mr. Fodi.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to appoint the following individuals to the Economic Development Committee for terms to expire December 31, 2023. Choose, we get to choose one. Paul De Naro, Jeffrey Yule, or Stephen-
I'm sorry, it's the wastewater project.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
We got it, Mr. Studo.
Madam Chair, it's miswritten. It should say wastewater project.
My problem.
So we have to recuse ourselves for this one. So, Madam Chair, you'll have to-
I'll just, I'll just read it, but I won't vote. Is that okay?
Got it. Let's, but, yeah, let's be-
Yes, but no.
So the motion, make the motion?
Madam Chair, do you want to entertain a motion from one of your colleagues?
Please. Mrs. Manu Pelli, would you like to make the motion?
I do, yes. Madam Chair, I need a minute to get there. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Page 18, Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Just, Madam Chair, for the record, please let the record show that myself and-
Let the record show that Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Walner have recused themselves from this vote.
And discussion.
And discussion.
Discussion deliberation.
Oh dear, I can't seem to find the page.
How about?
Do you want to make the motion? I can make it.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint the following individuals to the Wastewater Project Committee. Choose one.
For terms to expire, terms to expire December-
Excuse me. For terms to expire December 31st. Choose one. Paul De Naro, Jeffrey Yule, Stephen Casaza.
Okay. And Mr. Studo, do you have a recommendation as chair?
Uh, yes. So-
Second the motion.
I want to thank everybody for submitting. You know, it's very much appreciated.
What, Mr. Studo, one sec. I'm sorry.
I just, Madam Chair, would you mind recognizing the second? I think it was Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Oh, Mrs. Manu Pelli, yes, I had the motion and Mrs. Manu Pelli made the second. And now, Mr. Studo, if you have a recommendation.
Okay. So after looking at all three, Mr. Casaza has experience in directly wastewater planning, designing, construction.
Oh.
You would think we put something out on monster.com, like looking for a resume. So I feel that one of the biggest things that I've seen in the process is that there's a lot of technical information that, when simplified, I even can understand it. So I feel that someone with this type of background, especially since we're just looking for someone to spit out the facts, can really take a lot of that info and put it to a way that everyone can understand. So I, you know, based on this and also, it seems like you can give some help on some other things. So hopefully volunteer some other things for us. But, so I recommend Stephen Casaza, about seven rounds of circle, North Reading.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Manu Pelli?
I, on the motion, Stephen Casaza.
Yeah. And the chair is Stephen Casaza.
Madam Chair, to be clear, Mr. Studo voted for Mr. Casaza.
Stephen Casaza.
Yes. Motion by Mr. Studo.
We can't hear anything back here.
What? You can't hear anything? That can-
The only thing that we could hear was that Mr. Studo voted for Mr. Casaza.
None of you could hear anything? You can't hear anything over there?
No, we can't hear anything in this room. Sitting near the air conditioners. This room's not light.
Why don't you, why don't you come up here?
No, no, I can't hear you.
Do you want to come up here?
No, I can't hear you up there either. If you could just repeat, who was appointed to the committee?
Stephen Casaza.
Oh, that's it? Okay.
Yeah, there were other names. There was-
I understand there were other names, but I did not hear the votes of the other member, voting members of the select board on-
We all voted for Stephen Casaza.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on, we are on to our American Rescue Plan ARPA Funds Discussion and Use of Funds hoped to be taken.
Madam Chair, if I may make a suggestion, if the majority of the board is in favor of spending any of those ARPA funds for the previously discussed purpose, I would ask that the chair divide the motion, put that up first, make a determination, then Mr. Walner and I could participate in the rest of the discussion rather than going around and around and around.
Okay. So we can do that. Do we have a motion for that?
We might have a motion prepared. So someone would need to offer a motion to obligate $500,000 in ARPA funding to continued wastewater planning.
Was it, was it prepared, Mr. Gilberto? Because I'll find it.
It's not prepared, Mr. Studo.
Not, okay. Madam Chair, I vote to appropriate $500,000 of ARPA funding to go towards design of the wastewater project. Completion of the wastewater project. Did I say that right?
Complete design.
Design.
Complete design and continued planning.
Complete design and continued planning of wastewater project.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I have a second, and then I would like to have discussion.
Just would you please have the record show with myself and Mr. Walner?
Let the record show that Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Walner have recused themselves from, as select board members from-
Discussion determination.
Discussion determination, yes. Do you have that, Mrs. Manu? Okay. And now I would like to open it up to discussion from my colleagues. Any discussion? Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Should be deliberation, for the generation.
I have that.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Madam Chair, the total sum presently available of ARPA funds is what?
Madam Chair, through you, approximately $3,100,000.
$3,100,000?
Approximately. If you give me a moment, I can give you the exact figure. $3,187,208.89. Unobligated ARPA funding.
That should be enough.
She's making sure. Her wish list is covered. Okay. Any discussion from my colleagues? Any further discussion? Could I open it up to citizen discussion? No?
Thank you.
Mrs. Mallon, did you have something to say?
Yeah, just a question. If they do vote for holding the use of $500,000 by the next time the town meeting comes up, I'm just concerned with when we went to the 1,500 people that were against the project at the time, can this $500,000 be brought up at the next town meeting at?
October 2nd.
If you vote, what vote are they now to do the design? The next time we vote for money to be spent on the wastewater project, if it gets voted down, can this $500,000 be held? If you have a need to get, there's already one. Once voted, is this money gone? So I guess the only reason I was thinking is for that money they asked at the town meeting, we had a lot of people against it before, just to show, what's it, trying to work with people, there's understealings going on. They may hear better if they're part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you. The town meeting that you're referring to, I don't think had to do with that. That was just a change of- Yeah, that was a bylaw change.
We already, town meeting already appropriated funds for design.
That was a bylaw change?
The notion that the design, that people were opposed to it is, that's not accurate at all.
No, they weren't opposed to it. That's not what they were opposed to. They were just changing a bylaw.
We appropriated, the town appropriated funds from J T Berry for the design of this work project. So is it just another portion of that? So to say that, that people are against it-
No, no, we're just saying, at that meeting, is it one other meeting coming up in October? Will we have funds for the rest of the sewage?
Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, through you, if this motion passes, there would not be any requests for fund. I don't, I don't believe there would be a need for any request for funding.
There wouldn't be a need.
At either October annual or a special town meeting until next spring, when the construction portion of the project is being brought forth. This funding would have been spent at that point in time, along with the state grant funding.
Okay, I can answer your question. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Take a vote. Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. Okay, so Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Walner?
For joining again.
Can join us again. You are now select board members again.
Still, it's good and bad.
Whether you like it or not. All right, now we will open ourselves up for discussion other than wastewater for ARPA funding.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yes.
So we have a presentation we put together. I can try to move quickly through it because we've covered a lot of the background information. And I want to recognize the Director of Public Works and the Finance Director for their contributions to this presentation, and the many departments, boards, and committees that submitted suggestions, proposals, aid for consideration. So again, just some information regarding ARPA itself. Where communities who received in excess of $10,000 must use ARPA funding in four categories: addressing the pandemic, premium pay for eligible workers, necessary infrastructure improvements, and revenue replacement for lost growth. If you receive less than $10 million, as North Reading did, we do not need to demonstrate any actual revenue loss to select the standard allowance. And that basically means we can use the funding for a variety of different portions and uses for general government services. Significant benefit of this new option is the spending flexibility it affords us. This standard allowance may be spent on any general government services authorized by state law, subject to the grant award terms and other compliance requirements. Electing this allowance does not convert the money into general funds. It's still grant funds. It's significant because any of the expenditures made are subject to award terms, reporting requirements, which we're going to have to do and have been doing, and federal uniform compliance, uniform guidance compliance. That means, so some, a portion of the work we talked about, the design for wastewater funding, for example, we're not required to go out to competitive bid for, but to comply with the terms of the grant agreement for the federal government, we do need to go out to bid. So Mr. Parisi actually is preparing to go out to bid as soon as tomorrow so that we can begin that process on this previous vote. We can't put the funding into a pensions fund. We can't make debt service payments, and we can't replenish our any day funds or other financial reserves. So that's just a little bit about ARPA funding in general.
Thank you.
I'm not going to go through the deadlines. I think everyone knows them. Sign contract for work to be done. The contract has to be signed by December 30, 31st of 2024, and the money has to all be spent by December 31st of 2026. We cannot re-obligate them after December 31st, 2024. So it's really important that we don't over-obligate into any one particular area, because if we overshoot the number and don't spend it all, that will get lost, get clawed back, unless we're able to move quickly and make a decision to reallocate the funding before December 31st, 2024. So this is a little bit about ARPA's funding, spending to date. I don't have the breakdown here, but we got approximately $4.7 million from the federal government. A portion of it was dedicated to the town, and a portion of it was our share of Middlesex County's allocation. We no longer have county government here in Middlesex County, so we actually received a portion of the county's assessment. And that totaled $4.7 million. Early on, I should say, very soon after we received the funding, we purchased a little over $26,000 worth of COVID test kits. I think everyone's familiar, we distributed them around at that point in time. We're still distributing some of them, unfortunately. We allocated through a vote of select board, $28,500 toward the turf field for, due to a shortfall in funding for that project. As part of our capital plan for fiscal year 2024 and beyond, we've already obligated $1.4 million to the Park Street Bridge and $100,000 to the Avril and Chestnut Street intersection. That leaves us with approximately, I should say exactly, $3,187,208.89. This is really important. It's a follow-up to the last detailed discussion that we had two meetings ago regarding ARPA, and it's reflective of some comments that were offered by the Finance Director that I know the board was really eager to hear. So sort of, I'm stating this sort of on her behalf and also on behalf of the departments involved. This listing of nine projects are projects that are authorized for borrowing at town meeting already, either in the June 2023 or earlier town meeting. So you see, anything that wasn't June 2023 is noted here with the prior date on it. And you see in the right-hand side that green column. That means in discussions with the department head, mostly Mr. Parisi, but also with others, we've determined that these previously authorized for borrowing projects will be under contract by December 31st, 2024, and the funding will all be spent by December 31st, 2026. Of the nine projects, one of them has already been factored into our financial planning. It's the Park Street Bridge, and you see that at the bottom. Noticeably absent, the Chestnut Street Bridge. And the reason is because of the timeline. We talked at length in the last meeting about how long that design could take, and there's a significant risk, not as much that we won't finish construction by December of 2026, but that we won't be able to enter into a construction contract by December of 2024. It's a significant concern. We don't feel we can responsibly bring it forward to you to be funded here, even though to me, for many other reasons, it's a logical use of the funds. It's a significant project with a lot, a heavy borrowing cost. It's just not going to get contracted at times, so it's not on this list. But to the board members who wanted to know and for the discussion that we were having about what's already been authorized and we could use this for, Finance Director has assembled this list of eight projects that are on there. A total of $2,071,000 in authorized appropriations that we have not borrowed yet. I'm going to go into a little bit less detail here because there's a lot on it. You know, at the request of the board, I did ask for, I did provide an opportunity for proposals to be submitted in. I provided guidelines to department boards and committees that these proposals needed to be under contract by December 31st, 2024, and the funding had to be all spent by December 31st, 2026. I think we received approximately 28 projects totaling about $2,071,000. They range from Central, excuse me, Madam Chair, I don't know whether you want me to read them all, or I can name the departments. I mean, there are a number of projects that came in. Many of them have been on capital improvement plans suggested and submitted by departments but not approved over a variety of years. And I'm just going to, you know, Central Street Sidewalk, we were able to do some design work on that, but that has been on a capital request for a number of years. Same for the street sweeper and bucket truck. Number of engineering-related requests, you know, some paving that's on there, the downtown sewer project, also known as the town center sewer project. So I won't read them all, but there are a number of them there. Those who are in the room have a hand up. Those who are at home can see them on the screen. Scroll to the second screen where you see that's on there. Some of the newer projects that I expect that we will see in the capital requests for fiscal year 2025 are from the town clerk regarding pole pads, voting calculators, and town meeting clickers, or to be the way to electronically conduct our open town meeting. I will note, we included the school department in the distribution of the request, so they did submit, I believe it's seven projects, some field lighting. I will note modular units, a couple of proposals, one for the hood, one for the little school, alarm systems for the elementary schools. alarm systems for the elementary schools. But the two that I feel I have an obligation to really call out for discussion here are two projects that have been previously authorized at town meeting. One is Kids Spot. We have appropriation of funding, approximately $75,000 at the June town meeting from retained earnings to finish that project. That is being, that is to match what was $150,000 in state funding. Am I have that right, Mr. Told? Two, in two separate grants that we received. That project is still facing a projected shortfall. There's a significant amount of site work that needs to be done there. We proceeded with the demolition of the existing equipment due to safety concerns, and now the land is sort of, you know, bare, waiting for site work to be done to address ADA accessible grading and a new outline of design that we, the Land Utilization Committee and Parks Recreation are working with the designer on. I'm calling that out because it's an approved project with a shortfall. The second thing I feel an obligation to call out is the hood school boilers. That's also a project with a shortfall, and I'm going to look to Mrs. Galvin. Got submitted as $100,000. Is that your understanding from Mr. Conley of the shortfall in that project?
This project was 225. I've read they purchased the boilers for about $125, but they're running into trouble with the labor portion of it. So he didn't specify the amount to me until this came in at $100,000, so we know what the shortfall is.
So I just, I highlight those two because to me, you know, they, they fit the mold of my prior interaction in the spring with the board about the use of ARPA funds for the Arthur Kenny Field. Authorized the town meeting. We went to bid, we had bids in hand, we knew what the cost was going to be with that shortfall. So I just, I highlight those two as, I've known more than anything else. And then again, this is just a summary page to show you what we have available. What was already authorized for borrowing, which is in that slide that reflect what Mrs. Galvin was presenting to the board two meetings ago, and then the total of what was requested, which was a large number, $13,746,400 worth of requests. I will note for the board, in the initial version of the project spreadsheet, the new proposals, the Kids Spot project was on, it was inadvertently listed as $100,000. But they're requesting at least $250,000, is my understanding, so I just want to make sure folks didn't see that.
So $100,000, it should be $250,000.
Should be $250,000.
Correct.
Sorry, say that again? So they submitted a request for at least $250,000. When it got entered into the spreadsheet that summarized and put in the presentation that you may have seen over the weekend, it said $100,000. It should have said $250,000. Oh, so it says, what I have is $100,000. It should be $250,000. Okay.
On the screen, it was $250,000.
We put in $250,000 plus $150,000.
So that I'm going to defer to others to comment on, because I'm not the best to speak to that aspect of it, so.
So, is it $250,000 or $350,000?
You know what, Mrs. Mullin, can you come up? Because I think there's some questions from the, from the board about it. Mr. O'Leary?
No, so, it's not $100,000. So is it $250,000 or $350,000?
It was $250,000 and with a potential $100,000. We're meeting with the designer this Friday. And once we meet with the designer and pick one, the team will get with the designer. Once we get the designer, to meet with us, we need a budget in order to get what they're going to, they're going to charge us. So we're asking for $250,000 plus a potential $100,000.
The $250,000 number we came up with in the end of discussion, because we started seeing what we were going to get for the money that we had available. And with the meeting with the residents community at our public meetings, man, you know, basically we wanted to get, put it back to close to what it was before. And when we started the vision designs, to get a basic structure, it was $250,000, $250,000 shortfall. But we add upon another $100,000, just in case, that was just like a wish, if we could, you know, do extra things like site furnishings or fences or things like that. That's like a, that's a good extra wish. So the $250,000 is to get it the way we have it back the way it was, ADA by ADA compliant, inclusive.
And what was the original appropriation? When were we originally appropriating to redo Kids Spot?
$225,000. We had $50,000, but we had to expand by June 30th. So that's why we used that money to do the demolition. That's why it's closed now. Because it was a timeout.
So $225,000 was the original appropriation, which was?
Are you saying original now, Stephen, or are you saying the original 30 years ago?
No, no, not 30 years ago.
Okay.
No, no, no.
I'm going to, Mrs. Studo, I'm going to let him take over for one minute. Mr. Studo?
So you had, you had a?
The original, no, Stephen, that's why I didn't know if you were asking.
No, no, you're looking for a supplement to an appropriation that was made. What was the original appropriation that was made?
We did not have a number, because we did not have the designer yet. What we had is a plan that we laid out as best we could. What we had back 30 years, well, say the equipment that was up there was $150,000 in that day. Those numbers today, if you take that equipment, is $370,000. So when we priced it out, we realized we needed more on the equipment. We're trying to make it whole to what we had before. And also 30 years ago, everything but the equipment was donated, which was installation, site work, footings, everything done by that. Now we're looking to price it. Now we're looking to price it out with everything that you need. We came up that it would be about $248,000, not leaving any money for that extra 10% that you usually leave. And the difference is because of the sites, the site we had 30 years ago was okay, but different things that we need now for?
Yeah, requirements change.
Right, for the other requirements, brought it back up. So we're saying $248 minimum and potentially another $100.
And then, what was the, maybe you can refresh it. What was the appropriation of it as far as using their funds, the reserve funds, and then the raised appropriate was going to be what?
When we see the $50,000 grant that had been, we got an additional $100,000 earmarked from the state, and Parks and Rec, they appropriated $75,000 towards the project.
Which gets you to the $225,000.
$225,000.
$225,000 total.
$473,000.
So yeah.
So it's our best estimate of $473,000 to make it whole.
So it's all going to be almost $500,000 to make it whole. Okay, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Mr. Studo, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so I was at the meeting a few weeks back when this was being discussed, and I don't know if there was another one, but where, does this include? I'm looking at it long-term, right? And so my question is, Mrs. Mullin, does this include something that checks the box for kids of all ages? I know that was a discussion that, you know, I think that one way to go about it was you had to pick and choose, but I did come, I was in agreement with many members mentioning that part of the problem is, because I see it at home, is that when my nine-year-old gets involved with my two-year-old, nothing good ever happens, because one is just progressively larger. So my question is, this $250,000, if appropriated, would it get us to the point where there's something for everyone, or were, did we, was the pick and choose approach taken?
Through the chair?
Please.
No, so this would make it, this would make it complete inclusive for everybody. It would be more gauge toward the toddler, because that's how Kids Spot always was, but it'd also be inclusive for the older kids, a separate, separate area of it. So it'd be inclusive for toddler, school age, all of it, and kids with disabilities, ADA compliant, it'd be, that's where the whole plan is, we're, we have, we've been looking at design, we haven't decided on yet, because we're waiting for the, we have to wait to figure out what we had for the budget to decide which design we were going to go with. And we'll be able to work with them to make sure that it includes everything that we're looking for.
And two, two last questions, Madam Chair. If you got this $250,000, what would the total, total cost be, roughly?
$475,000.
$475,000, $475,000.
And, and the old playground we just destroyed, how long did that last?
30, 30 years.
34 years.
34 years.
34, and would you say that the new equipment has better, is it, is it more durable or the same?
I would say not as durable as this, that one was.
Okay. So I'll discount four years off that. I'm just trying to do the math that, the way I see it is that the community wants this, and, you know, and then I'll, I'll let everyone else speak, but we're looking at roughly, it's going to come into 15, you know, almost $16,000 a year. Let's say this lasted for 30 years, and that's a pretty good deal for what was just described, that it would fit kids of all ages, just because it's been, I was there when IRP put up the new one, and any parent of a child under five, I, I thought was going to like, you know, pitchfork, the grammar school we call Town Hall. So we, you know, I'm very, I, I think it's, in my opinion, I think it's, the appropriation is appropriate, just because it's something that fits into some type of infrastructure. I mean, it's not wastewater, but it is, I guess, kids' infrastructure, but more importantly, you get your money's worth. You know, I mean, it gets used. Like, I just know that I have a much smaller piece in my backyard from Creative Playthings, and I cannot describe the amount of hours it gets used, that little piece. So, so that's just, I just wanted to break that down, Madam Chair, and just say that I, I am in favor of the appropriation. Thank you.
Mr. Walner?
Yeah, so I'm looking at this list, and what I see is, you know, boilers, trucks, Kids Spot, these don't last for very long. These are depreciating assets in my mind. So what stands out to me is the downtown sewer project, and also what stands out to me is the fire station renovation. And what also stands out to me is the improvements on the intersections, three intersections that are going on here. These are things that provide safety, that will last practically forever, and that we should really be centering our money on. So I would just want to know on the downtown sewer project, which is a big slice, I believe that by putting that in, that'll protect the existing sewer system we already have, because my understanding is the high school sewer system that we have is underutilized in the summer, and it's at great risk of being maintained in the future, or potentially having to be replaced or renovated, because we don't use it during the summer. By connecting up the fire department, police department, potentially the Peabody things, that would put that to better use and give us a longer life on that. So to me, that's a very, very, very high project, because I believe it's an investment in the future that will provide a return on investment. So I, you know, through the chair, can we get an opinion from the Finance Committee about that? Because if not, we should cross it off.
Cross what off?
I mean, like, I'm sure there's like timing, or there might be issues about that, what I just said.
Oh, about the sewer?
About the, the down, the, when I say downtown, I mean, at the high school, middle school, it's not really downtown. It's, you know, historic.
Police, fire.
Correct.
Library.
Library.
Damon Tavern, Third Meeting House, Strategic Bachelor School. I still think we should approach the state as far as PB Court.
PB Court, too.
PB Court.
No, we're not PB Court.
I know it's not, but I think, I think you should.
Yeah, I agree.
But the problem with that is.
Can you speak through the chair, Mrs. Herbert? Please. Don't, Mrs. McNail's trying to take notes over here, and we can't just have people randomly talking.
But that's, that's the downtown we're talking about.
That's the downtown.
Okay, so if, if we can just focus on, on Kids Spot, and then we're going to go over everything else, we can go over everything else.
Okay, I'm not in support of Kids Spot, simply because I think that compared to the other priorities on here, it's not, it's not a, it's, as was said, it's a 30-year project. I live in the Mines Pond area. That was built by raising funds. You know, it's, it's been, it's been, you know, the Halloween thing drove a lot of that fundraising, so I'm, I'm, not that I'm against Kids Spot, but when I see the other issues on here, they're bigger projects that we need to think about, that will provide more return on the investment for the, for the, for the town. And the fire, you know, the downtown sewer project is to me, the historic downtown sewer project is the highest priority.
Mrs. Mani Pelli, do you have anything you want to ask?
Yes, I'm not sure how we jump and write the Kids Stop in the first place.
We're just asking questions.
We end up to ask Mr. Gilberto about his presentation. I have some questions about that. And I think we need to kind of revisit the approved projects. I think this is, this is all wrong, because this was vetted through CIPC through the Enterprise Fund. I mean, and now different figures here, $50,000, $100,000, $75,000. What was on the warrant was $100,000, which was a supplement to grants. We, we got $225,000, then $375,000, now it's $425,000. I think I just heard. We're, let's, let's hold on here, slow down here. If there's that much of an increase in the project, they should then go back to CIPC, just like every other department has to, to kind of review where the cost overruns are, or what type of issues occurred, that it's that much more money. But I'd like to ask Mr. Gilberto a couple of questions. It seems like a foregone conclusion when moving on to Kids Stop. I'm back to a couple of things on proper use of ARPA funding, and I'd like to ask Mr. Gilberto a couple of questions on the presentation, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. We jumped right into Kids Stop, and I don't understand how or why. Mr. Gilberto?
So we can back that up, Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, yes.
Mani Pelli?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Gilberto? Mr. Gilberto, can I ask you, last week, we appropriated, and the week before, we appropriated funds, you had that slide, we appropriated funds for, yes, specific of the, I think it's before this, this is, this is something else. What we used it already on was the Hayrow and Chestnut intersection. We appropriated that money. In the warrant article, there were, there were two items that were approved under the capital plan, using free cash and a portion of capital improvement stabilization for $145,000. So that's distinct from this $100,000. Is that right?
I just want to pull up the warrant through you, Madam Chair. Which project, are you speaking of, Mrs. Mani Pelli?
The Hayrow, Hayrow and Chestnut Street, that they, the intersection, the safety upgrades.
Yes.
On Hayrow and Chestnut Street. So one was the sidewalk to Heritage, and, and the other one was to supplement with free cash. So this, the sidewalk in the warrant was $85,000, and the other portion of it was $60,000 in free cash to supplement the, the intersection safety upgrades. So what was, so in your list right here, spent to date, was that $100,000 to design for the design?
So, Madam Chair, through you, so there are three funding components for the Hayrow and Chestnut Street intersection. The first was a $480,000 appropriation by borrowing at town meeting in June of 2022, so a little more than a year ago. And that project ran into both a shortfall for the original scope, and also a request to, or recommendation to add a sidewalk to connect the intersection with existing sidewalks on Heritage Way. So the shortfall was $160,000. The sidewalks were $85,000. To make up the shortfall, $60,000 was appropriated in free cash. It was then combined with $100,000 in ARPA funding, which shows up on this slide. And then there was the $85,000 appropriated in June of '23 for the sidewalk. So does that clarify, through you, Madam Chair, and Mrs. Mani Pelli?
So if I were to make a motion to utilize the $85,000 of ARPA funds, we wouldn't be pulling from free cash for that project, right?
Madam Chair, through you, that would be correct, but we have previously been advised, both by the Finance Director and both by the Finance Director and by the, the ARPA folks she's consulted with, to avoid funding cash-appropriated articles, and instead to, to look to the, those that have not been borrowed yet.
Why would that be the case if we're unrestricted in terms of your earlier portion of the presentation?
Madam Chair, through you, I defer it to the Finance Director. If you could come up, Gloria.
If we can use this as replacement revenue, you know, that's a replacement revenue category, why would it matter?
Because free cash.
What the funding source?
Free cash closed on June 30th. That free cash had to be used by June 30th. So we used it, it's gone. We can't, we can't change the funding source on that item. We can only change funding sources on items that we were going to borrow and have not yet borrowed. If we were going to close those articles, we would have to close them out, let them flow to free cash again, and it, it's just a massive, we're not supposed to do that. We can only do items that we have not borrowed for, because of the timing.
Can you say that again? It has to be used by June of 2023?
That free cash had to be used by June of '23. So it was gone, it's used, we cannot change it now. It doesn't release it back. That, those funds would be tied up until the, probably the end of '24 again, and we've been advised not to do that. The only items we should be changing at this juncture are items that we intended to borrow but have not yet borrowed.
My second question, Mr. Gilberto, is on the presentation. You talked about a project that would not be completed. And so you didn't recommend, this was one of the safety improvement projects. And I think, I do think it was, it might have been North and Central, you didn't think would be, you didn't think would be completed within the deadline. But, do I have that, do I have that wrong?
Madam Chair, through you, no. The project that I, I said was not on the list was the Chestnut Street Bridge, because of the design involved with that project, and the likelihood that we would not be able to enter into a contract for the full amount by December of 2024. We actually did have North and Central Street as one of the projects that could be, a project previously authorized to borrow, but not borrowed, that could be funded with ARPA funds.
If the Chestnut Street design, if we had a contract on the design of it, could we, do you think that would meet the deadline? Just like we would be considering the design of the water sewer? Do you think we could have some appropriated through ARPA for design of Chestnut Bridge?
Madam Chair, through you, the Finance Director, was that an authorization to borrow that project, or was that a free cash?
The design was what, three hundred thousand?
Two seventy-five. There's free cash, three hundred thousand dollars. So that was similarly a free cash appropriation, that would, would be in the same category as the eighty-five thousand dollars that we were talking about earlier.
We really missed the boat on a lot of the same things. But, um, so we're going to zone in then on projects that we're, we're bonding for.
Madam Chair, through you, that, that's how we've been advised. Yes, Mrs. Manu Pelly.
We missed the mark on a lot of this, then. It's too bad. But thank you for answering those questions.
Okay.
That was answered, yeah.
Mr. Gilberto?
I, I do want to just offer that we went into Town Meeting planning to allocate 1.5 million dollars each year to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. That is what I indicated in maybe the spring of this year. What changed is the, the definition of obligate, right? We, we learned that we needed to enter into a contract to spend. So we could follow that same approach, 1.5 million dollars. We could only do two fiscal years of it if we were to follow through. So this funding source that we, this recommendation we made to Town Meeting in June did rely on 1.5 million dollars worth of ARPA funding. It's not showing up in available funds because it's been allocated to this. So I, you know, we certainly did take that into consideration in our, in our recommendations through CIPC to the Board and to Town Meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't.
I don't ever recall.
I don't remember saying that was earmarked for ARPA funds.
I don't recall that at all.
Madam Chair, through you, so we had a capital improvement plan that came to the Select Board in April of this year. And we reviewed funding requests to go to Town Meeting. And they were to be augmented for two projects, which I think the Board voted on at, at one point. I think it was over the summer, 1.4 million dollars for the Park Street Bridge.
That was specific.
Correct. And one hundred thousand dollars for the balance of the Habrel and Chestnut Street one. That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay, but it wasn't one, okay. I misunderstood. I thought you were saying 1.5 million dollars, which Capital Improvement Planning usually uses as a benchmark number to
Yeah, stable.
to utilize on an annual basis.
Yeah, no, this.
Was going to be supple, was going to be supplemented with 1.5 million dollars to cover that 1.5. I misunderstood.
It's above and beyond.
Above and beyond because of the, because of.
Misunderstood, yeah, me too.
Okay.
Yeah, got it.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think though, at that time, when you raised that as an issue, Mr. Gilberto, at that time, in April, I, I don't recall us being told that we had to, we had a deadline to spend the funds. I think that's a new thing that's recently come up since the June meeting.
Madam Chair, through you, that, that's absolutely.
I might be wrong about that. I just don't remember it being a deadline-driven type of a decision that we had to make.
Madam Chair, through you, so we did, we've had, we've known the deadlines. What, 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 what changed was the, the definition of obligating the funds, that we had to have them under contract by December of 2024. We couldn't simply have a vote, for example, during calendar year 2025, to obligate the funds. That was not going to meet the requirements on the federal government. So you're absolutely right. I mean, that's what changed.
And the fact that they're telling us they're going to take it back if we don't.
We've not been, we've not been notified that, that it's going to be taken back, but we have been encouraged to obligate it sooner rather than later.
Mrs. Manu Pelly, are you all set with the questions on the presentation?
Thank you.
Okay, so let me just clarify. I did call Mrs. Mullen up because there were questions. And Marty, they were questions. So I wanted the questions to be answered. I wasn't asking anybody to vote on it. I wasn't asking anybody to approve it. I was just asking them to come forward so that questions could be answered, so that they, they could go home, and then we could deliberate, you know, if they wanted to go home. Or they could stay and, and listen to us deliberate. So that's all I was doing. I wasn't asking for a vote. So I would actually like to continue that and just finish up the questions that we had about Kids Spot. No, thank you. Are we all set? Are there any more questions above?
I know that you're looking at long-term projects. Kids Spot is near and dear to my heart. I was one of the original people who developed Kids Spot. And it is good for the kids. It's good for the town. And I think at some point, you have to say, what is good for the people, for their lives, for their livelihood, and their health? It gets the kids out. The kids are in the field on Saturday, they go up to Kids Spot. What we have now is for two-year-olds to twelve-year-olds. That's a classification that's used for playground development, two to twelve-year-olds. What you have now was a hundred, what used to be there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars thirty-four years ago. We didn't pay for installation. We didn't pay for site development. We designed it ourselves. But that doesn't work today. And if you want the town to have something, a destination playground that everybody can go to, it's not just a playground. It's a community center. It's a place for people to gather, for parents to talk to each other, to watch their kids play soccer, to then go up and play. It's an investment in the future of the town. It's not going, it's not a piece that's going to be under the ground. It's going to affect people's lives on a daily basis. And if you don't fund something that's worth some money, you only spend fifty thousand dollars, you can have one piece of equipment. And it's not going to, you're going to be having people call you on the phone constantly complaining. But think about the kids. Think about their health. Think about the parents' health, their sanity, because they get the kids out running around and out of their hair for a little bit. And the parents also get to talk to each other. It's, it's for the benefit of the town.
Thank you. Can I ask you, if these ARPA funds were not available, what was, what, what is it you were going to have to do?
Reason I was hoping to have presentations for all these things over the next two weeks, but we couldn't answer a lot of them. But the original reason we even got any money is a year and a half ago to two years, we met with state officials in Brad Jones to walk through IRP to show, because he happened to be in town and had meetings here. So we took the state reps, we walked through IRP and showed them what 25 years of the money we put into, if it's a park did, and Kids Spot. And they looked at it, and we said, these are the things we need now to redo them 30 years later. So what we looked at is, they said, we will try to give you, we didn't just ask Brad, we asked all of them in different departments, what grants can be right? And they said, we can give you whatever we can. They praised the Parks Department for everything they had done to keep IRP looking the way it did. We don't have money from the town. It had come from, all from the Hillview originally. So they looked at it and said, we're going to try to get you some money, apply for grants, sure, if you see it. We're going to try to get you some state money. They came up with 50,000 first, because we had said to them, Kids Spot is one of the oldest ones, and dangerous, and had to, started to get dangerous, and then had to get fixed. They gave us 50,000 to spend in 2023, which we did. And then they gave us the hundred thousand to spend in 2024. We still will try to get, unless it's a year and a half ago, we'll still try to get your money, but there are going to be COVID funds coming down, because what did you find in parks and recreation, and land utilization, that had happened the most? We said, we had more ceilings down to IRP in the past two years than we ever did because of COVID, because we were a place for them to walk around. We get more parents that can't go to school or anything else. But Kids Spot was always bombed and filled, because that people could go out, it was an outdoor thing. And we decided to also hear from people's ADA and said, if you're going to look at parks now, please, we don't want to keep begging for things for ADA and get accessible and set, we need kids that have other skills, that they need to be able to get out for their safety for these children. So that's when we put the money into a hundred thousand from the state. We got 50,000 originally before that. Parks and Rec voted a hundred thousand, put 25,000 to IRP, and 75,000 to Parks. And we started with 175, then we could start to work, clear, and design, and see what else was needed. That's what we got. And then IRP, the A R P A, we heard about the funds, and we said, we're going to apply for that. So all we did was try to be proactive in Parks and Rec and LUC to apply for the things in town that aren't under use of these. Seventy percent of our wins are all open to the public, and the other 30% of sales are open to public all the time. So we said, these are monies that, we're not going to keep having bake sales like Marty was able to do 35 years ago, and get 200,000 worth of volunteers. The town doesn't work that way anymore. So, and if you look at, we can tell you, everybody that went through, everybody that went through Kids Spot, every kid today and parent that is now part of PTOs, PTAs, what, library, Parks and Rec, and all those other social groups that have volunteered, have become people in the community, that volunteer the time, because they're the ones that have to know people in town from Kids Spot and plot, and, and through, right, on T E F. Take Kids Spot out, that's okay. We'll do what we can, clean it up, put something up, and keep working on ARPA funds.
Thank you. I have a question. During COVID, were the playgrounds unaccessible, or were, were they always open through COVID?
Until they.
They were closed at one point.
Mr. Gilberto?
As the, the bad guy. They, they were closed the very beginning of the pandemic, the spring of 2020. I think they reopened maybe late summer, yeah, roughly right. There was guidance that came out from the State Department of Public Health, and we were able to reopen them. So I would say three months, maybe four months. More?
If you promised me that would never happen again, I would probably. I, I, I'm going to not entertain from, I, I really need to, we need to move this on. I appreciate you coming and, and explaining that, and thank you. Um, and, but I, we, we have a lot to talk about. I think what I would really like to do is, I know, I'm hoping everybody went over everything and kind of made a wish list. It seems like you did, I, I, it seems like Kate did. I'm sure that everybody kind of picked their projects that were important to them. So if we could just go over them and maybe find like-minded ones, if we're all in agreement, at least we can kind of try to narrow down.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Leary?
I, I think it's important for the Board to come to a consensus, first of all, as to whether or not we're going to take ARPA funds and fund projects that have already been
Right.
borrowed for. And, you know, we have, well, there's 2 million, but there's 1.6 million out. There were a couple of projects that haven't been signed on for yet, but would fall within the time. I see you've got 2 million dollars worth of projects. I think what the Board needs to understand is that if you take the 2 million dollars and supplant the borrowing, all that we've saved, saved, is approximately 190, 200,000 dollars, the borrowing costs that we would be paying along the way.
Right.
So, and you haven't picked up a new project at all. You haven't picked up anything. You've gained nothing. You've taken 2 million dollars, allocated to things that we've already factored into our budget, and gained nothing, other than you have freed up approximately 200,000 dollars for next year, for other projects that we're going to bond for over five, 10, 20, 30 years. To me, what I've sort of been seeing all along is, you know, I would like to see this windfall, and we have this one-time money, useful projects that were somewhat out of reach, somewhat overlooked, that are going to have a long-term benefit to the community, as opposed to just supplanting a budgetary issue here. You know, 200,000, less than 200,000 dollars. Spending 2 million is only going to get you 200,000 this year, and not get another project done. To me, I would like to see the Board come to a consensus of, if that's what you're going to do, and the majority's going to do that, fine, say it, you know, and I would respectfully disagree and probably not vote for it, but whatever it is, it is. But to me, that's what we need to decide first, is, you know, are we going to be using these funds to supplement a budget that we've already approved and can live with? Or are we going to take this money and do some things that we wouldn't normally be able to do, but wouldn't consider doing? And even things that are not on this list, you know, that, think a little bit outside of the box, and what's going to have a long-term impact on the community? So if we can get that sorted out, that gives us a little more guidance as far as where do we go for what's on the list? Some of these things we've seen through the capital improvement planning process, some of it we haven't, but most of it, a lot of it, we have. And it's going to be coming up again within our normal budgetary process. We're going to appropriate approximately 200,000 dollars a year to cover the debt service on these things. Or do we go to something else? Take on a project that, or two or three, that, that really means something, that's going to have a long-term positive impact on the community, you know, for generations to come? You know, and I think that's what we, that's how, that's how we need to focus ourselves first. And again, if the Board decides, first and foremost, let's just supplant what we've already appropriated with this money, and free up 190,000 dollars. Or are we going to embrace doing something a little more bold, a little more different? a little more different, a little more impactful, that we wouldn't normally be able to afford because we got this windfall? And to me, that's what we should be doing with it. But, you know, but again, I'm only one. So I think that would help us focus, first and foremost. You know, is the board in favor of utilizing these funds for previously appropriated projects? Again, we shouldn't be buying a dump truck with the, with the opera funds. We shouldn't be buying a, you know, fire truck or the opera truck. You know, that's a normal course of maintenance and upkeep that you have to, on a rotating basis, replace things, you know? Pretty much the same thing with borders. Now, if you had a boiler project that was ongoing and there was a shortfall for unforeseen circumstances and you needed $50,000, sure, I might consider that, get the project done.
Yeah.
You know, but as a matter of principle, I'm not in favor of supplanting things that we already have in the normal budgetary process. Because all it does is it provides us with an additional small source of revenue to plug next year's hole, you know, when we run short on things. We shouldn't be doing that and put ourselves in a position to do that. You know, and again, and if you're going to do that, you know, if the majority of the board decides to do that, we're going to free up $200,000. Then as a matter of policy, we should give direction to the administration saying that $200,000 is to be used on projects other than maintenance, upkeep, this, that, and the other thing. Something different, something more substantive, something more long-term.
So why don't we get a consensus from the board? I know, Mrs. Mani-Pelli, I, I know that you had a list of things that you were interested in.
Yeah, I, I disagree completely with Mr. O'Leary. I think that putting the funds towards these projects that we've, you know, that have been moved forward for bonding or even a piece of the lights that wasn't approved upon, that we can utilize as far. I think every public safety thing on this, on this list that was on the Capitol Warren article, I think we should be utilizing the Aqua Funds towards that. Definitely Aqua Funds fell into our hands because of a public safety crisis. I think it's definitely, I'm a little confused. I'm, I'm confused about the mixed messages that we have to have it on a deadline by such and such a time. We have to have it spent by such and such a time. But it's not going to be taken back anyway, so it doesn't really matter. I'm very confused. I'm getting confused by the information or the direction I'm hearing here that it doesn't really matter if we spend it or not. So the whole point of this being brought up now since June, the June, after the June town meeting is to make sure that we have these funds earmarked for these projects that are basically under, are almost under contract by a deadline and completed by a deadline. But today we just learned, it doesn't really matter because they're not going to take the funds back anyway. So I don't understand why, why then we have to have it under a deadline like that. And I also recall when we discussed it, if the project cost is, let's say, $100,000 and it ends up, we appropriated the Aqua Funds for $100,000 and it ends up only costing $50,000, we lose the other $50,000. But really, what does that matter if they're not going to take it back? I don't understand why we even have to do anything, but my opinion is completely different than Mr. O'Leary's. We should be expanding the funds, including the funds that, including for the projects that were bonded. Does that free up money? Absolutely. Not every project that filtered through the Capital Planning Committee made it onto that list because we simply didn't have enough funding. And these one-time funding, these one-time funds can be used for some very important things. I also agree with Mr. Wallner that the fire station, that's crucial. That's been in planning phase. It had a blip or a halt due to COVID. We heavily relied on our firefighters during COVID. That's a great use of Aqua Funds. These safety, these intersections that we keep hearing about accident after accident after accident. We're, I believe, irresponsible board members if we don't appropriate the Aqua Funds towards those. Will it free up the bond for other projects down the line? Great, absolutely. Will it help us with our creditworthiness? If we're not out to bond on all of these projects and we can use them next time around? Hopefully. We haven't had a change in our rating for a long time, but hopefully that will matter and we'll be able to do more improvements for the town. My, my other thought is on the other proposal that Mr. Wallner mentioned, the sewer. I don't, I know that's been talked about, reviewed, and in the planning stage. I don't know how, again, I don't know how close we are to a contract, but it sounds to me like, you know, that really doesn't matter. But I'd like to see the funds being used towards those type of projects as well. All for all the public safety, right down to us. We, I, I, we did miss the boat. I wish we paid for the apparatus for the firefighters out of the Aqua Funds. I wish we paid for some of these safety upgrades to the library and, and bomb system that we used free cash for. But we didn't do that, so I'm in favor of putting, I have several motions. I've already made several motions at the previous meetings and I have several motions on the intersections and the other, some of the other projects. In particular, I'd, I'd also consider moving on the sewer, the downtown sewer, as well as the, as well as the fire station project, in addition to those three intersections. That's my thought. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Sudo, you have your hand up?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, most of these are not luxury items that are being asked across the board. Of course, any of the authorized projects that went through Capitol Warren plus are remaining. But it's sand in the sandbox. If we can all agree that most of these things have to get funded one way or the other, really, right now, this discussion is just a matter of what gets funded first and how. So, you know, it's kind of like when it comes to like a, trying to put a priority on it, that, that's really what we're talking about here. But I, it, it's not like a zero-sum game where, you know, if we did a combination of funding half of the authorized projects with this money instead of borrowing and then funding other things, it doesn't mean that these other things don't have to get done. So, you know, it, it's something where I think the ones that have already been authorized to borrow, the ship sailed on that. That's how I look at it. It's already been voted on. I mean, we, we went into it like that. It's kind of like, I don't know, in business, the way I do it is that if we have a project that we borrow for and then there's another project that comes and we have some money, we don't pay off that project we already borrowed for or about to borrow for and then still go looking for cash on the new project. It just, it's creating more work. That's just how I look at it from an accounting perspective. So I think it can be a combination of things and, you know, we can't, we can't fund everything. The authorized projects, at least we know we have the money because that's already been through town meeting. There are some other things in capital that were important. I have my, you know, my own thoughts on that from our discussions. But, you know, I just wanted to point that out that no matter how the board goes about this, there are still going to be millions of dollars worth of things that have to get paid for one way or the other over the next couple of years. Actually, some of these over the next 12 months. So, you know, I think that we should, you know, Madam Chair, you should entertain every, you know, you should entertain every motion you have to tonight to, to, hold on. We have, excuse me. After that first motion, we have $2.678 million, I think, available left. I mean, Madam Chair, in my opinion, so we can start talking about the bigger issue of where we can find more revenue for all these things, I think we should take care of this whole thing tonight, the whole $2.67. There's enough here. I mean, what was that total, Mr. Gilberto, $13 million on that slide? So, I mean, I'm pretty sure we can allocate this whole amount and then we can just, you know, because I feel like right now too, we're leaving a lot of committees, departments, and ourselves in limbo. Every meeting, we don't spend it. All right. You know, it's kind of like an estate plan that never ends. Every two weeks, there's new ideas. Like as Ms. Mani-Pelli said, she keeps making motions and it's just kind of a circle. So let's stop the circle. That's it. Like the just, the Michigan news got to go. Let's just do it and call it a day. So that, that's how I'm looking at it. So, Madam Chair, that's my ask, that whether it's for the fire station, Kids Spot, whatever, something that's not even on this list, let's just get it done. There's five of us, you only need three to get it done and call it a day. I mean, I know we want consensus, but you know what? I, you know, the chance of getting five out of five on every single vote, I mean, that just, you know, it, it's just difficult. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Sudo, did you have, I, I'm kind of looking for kind of top things on your list. Like Mr. Wallner mentioned, what was really important to him. Do you have something that's very important to you on that list?
It's not even about importance, but it's about what I think is priority.
Yeah.
Or priority of, yeah, I think, for example, for what's not been appropriated yet. And again, like I said, my opinion is that what's already been authorized to borrow, that ship sailed and, you know, doing the work again is just inefficient. That's my opinion. But I would say that, you know, I mean, maybe because I'm a liaison and I've heard it, but I think Kids Spot, I think that the, um, the fire station renovation, I mean, those are things that stick out to me. One, because it's a quality of life question. The other one, because it's a safety question. So those are two. And as soon as you tell me it's okay, I'm just going to start spitting out motions and get the ball rolling and we can just, you know.
Just to clarify, the, the fire station renovation, that's final design. Mrs. Harbert, can you speak to that? That, that's, I don't understand that there's already a design paid for.
We've had a couple of years or whatever it's been of discussions with the fire chief, the firefighter.
Can't hear very well.
Can't hear.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Believe it or not, we can't hear you very well. I couldn't resist, but it's true.
Do you want to come up?
Come on up.
We, we had, the last couple of years, we've gone through a period of talking to firefighters with the fire chief and like with the architects, with the town, with the town administrator, as well as with the facilities master plan committee. We've come up with preliminary design, a cost estimate for final construction, et cetera. We've now reached the point where we need to do final design and bid documents. It will take about 10 months. We have a contract that's on the TD's desk to do that portion. It's the final portion before construction. It would include all kinds of stuff. So, and I've sent out to Ms. Mani-Pelli because she serves on so this master plan, the town administrator has received all this stuff as a joke, as a joke reason.
Has the money been appropriated for this already?
It's, it's the final design leading to the big documents.
But there's no money for that, or is there money?
No, there is no money for that.
I thought the contract was on his desk.
The con, the, the contract for the final design and bid documents is on his desk. The funding isn't. I have a warrant article for town meeting to try and get the funding. But I, can I say one other thing, please? As chair of the finance committee, being a chair of the facilities master plan, but also being on Capitol, a lot of these items are really capital committee items that need to be looked at against other capital requests, which we have not received yet. So I think that to some degree, this is unfair. I also suggest to you that we have a road plan. So road paving is already in a given plan.
Understood. I, I think we're, we're all understood on that.
The hood school roof, or what chapter roof it is, that's already on their long-range capital plan, as are a lot of these other projects.
We understand that.
All right, thank you.
No, I think that's an important point, Madam Chair, to be made here.
It is. It was made.
Yes.
And I think we're on the same page with that as far as I can see.
No, I don't think it's, I don't think that was made. I, I think that's a really key point that Mrs. Harbert just made. These get funnelled through a process here.
Right.
Now we're putting things forward that should go back in that process. Plus, Chapter 90 funds and we have a regular roadway program of roadway improvements that's been in the works for years.
Absolutely. So I think Mr. O'Leary spoke to that a little earlier. I know that I feel the same way. I know that you were feeling the same way, so. Mr. O'Leary?
One of the things that I think we need to look at too, as a board, is that we have other assets in the community here
Right.
that we don't necessarily have not been able to tap into yet or, or better utilized. And some of them, now just give you a quick little checklist again, they're not on here. And I mentioned that the, I mean, we have the third meeting house, we have, you know, that isn't going anywhere. It's right in the center of town, on top of the common, and we can't use half the building. And it, and it's not in the Capitol plan. It's not here. And we have some money here that may help address it. I understand there's code issues and all of this and bring it up to. But the fact remains, we have a facility there that senior centers in, that we can't use and it's not going to go anywhere. We're going to have it, it's going to be there 100 years from now and we can't utilize it. Same thing with the, with the Damon Tavern. We have land. We have Ives Forest, which abuts Harold Parker State Forest. We have Swan Pond area, which Forest Committee is working on and we're looking at some trails there. Eisenhower Pond Park. We spent hundreds of dollars, millions of dollars purchasing land around Eisenhower Pond, laying out at Eisenhower Pond Park and put nothing into utilizing it. So we have the, so, you know, for passive recreation, active recreation areas, it doesn't fit in the normal budgetary process. These are one-time windfall monies that we should be considering taking the assets that we have and putting them to good use. You know, create a dog park. Access to the former Smith property. You have acres and acres of land there that we can't easily access and we're doing nothing about it.
I don't disagree, but you were the one who wanted to call the boards and committees to give us, and this is what we got.
No, 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 this is wonderful. And again, I'm not, I'm not, this is, I know, I'm not critical of what we've gotten here. This is wonderful. And I, and I think it's a necessary outreach that was needed by the board and the administration to get the feedback so we could see, get a full picture of things, right? So, but access to the Smith property. We've got the Smith property, we spent $3 million on it and done nothing with it. It's right on the Ipswich River. There's potentially land available directly abutting Ipswich River Park. It's an opportunity that maybe we should take advantage of because they don't make any more land and not make any more directly adjacent.
Are these things that would qualify for this money though? Things like this?
Madam Chair, you're right. I think generally, virtually anything would qualify for the way in which we're going to fund them, once given direction, which is swash revenue. The challenge is, can we enter into a contract to spend the money by December of 2024 and spend it by December 2026?
Again, a lot of these things, expansion of sidewalks, it doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit in our normal things because of all the other maintenance and upkeep that we normally have. Unaccepted streets. We spend tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year maintaining unacceptable streets because we can't put a little drainage and hot top some of them. And it doesn't seem to make it in here. Well, plant a few trees around town, beautification things. And then you talk about going green. You're talking about some solar power. You're talking about canopies. What's interesting is that there's a substantial amount of federal funds available and I know Reddymeter's light is looking into it to start doing these sorts of things. And I know we, we did try to do something in the high school. You know, the bids, the two bids that came in, one backed down and the other one didn't realize that what they really bid on was something other than what they wanted to pay for and were allowed to back out. But, but again, these are things that, you know, we need to get up to speed on environmental issues, passive recreation. And these are all assets that we already own and are doing nothing with them. And we have this windfall. And I'm, I'm not looking to save, you know, $200,000.
I, no, I, I agree, but I just don't, this needs to get done. We need to get, we've talked about this and talked about it. And now all of a sudden, there's all these other things. Like, we need to make decisions.
Right, but we need to do it.
And we need to... And we need to narrow them down.
But we need to decide philosophically how we're gonna, how we're gonna approach it.
But there's things you're saying that couldn't even happen because they, they're not gonna conform to the dates.
That's not true. That's not true. A lot of these things, no, it's not true. It's not true. What I might do, it doesn't take much, you know, to build access in, in parking spaces in some of these passive recreation areas as a start. I'm not saying you're gonna complete the whole project and put all the trails in. What I'm saying is you're gonna get yourself some access, and you're gonna work, have something to work with.
So is that what's at the top of your list?
This, these types of things are what at the top of my list. I wanted to see what everybody else was putting in here too. And again, I applaud everybody for giving it the thought and having some insight and trying to address some of the immediate and long-term concerns that the town has to address. Wonderful. We hadn't asked for it before, that's why I was insisting upon it previously, because it needed to be done. And that's great. But again, we still need to decide, as a board, how are we going to decide? Again, it's not a lot of money.
I know, but.
$3 million left, you know, whatever it is.
No, it's not a lot of money.
You know, so how do you, how do you take that windfall and make it, and make it work?
But then you don't want to do any of that, you want to go over here and do parks.
No, no, this is, I don't want to do any of this, that's not true. That's not true. I don't want to do anything that we already appropriated money for and already bonded for. I'm not interested, to Mr. Studo's point. That's not, that's over with. That's already in the budget, you know? So let's do some things that we couldn't normally do, let's look at an approach that's a little different.
Okay, so what I'm asking for is specific, give me something specific. Let's get some specifics from each person here. Right, you already gave them.
I'm ready to go. I'd like to ask some questions about it, actually, to find out if it's real.
So, this is, because we're never gonna narrow this down if we just keep thinking of other things. We have to narrow this down, so if everybody can give me their top three things, and let's see, maybe we're on the same page with some of them, and we can vote on them and get them done. I don't see how, well, because we'll just talk about this forever. It's never gonna get done. We have to make some decisions, and I would really like to make some decisions tonight. So if we could just start with, what are your top three? Everybody give me your top three, and let's see if we can come to a consensus on something.
One of the other things that I, what I just want to mention is, you know, in the short term, we're gonna be looking at a change in how we pick up trash. And I talked to Public Works Director today about it. You know, the vendor that we currently have is approaching us and wants us to go to the barrels, the claw.
The toads.
So that's a huge investment that needs to be made on the part of the, of the town. Now that's whether we're gonna do it in the form of having all the people who participate here, which are the residents of the town, and, and again, it's about 100 bucks a barrel, 200 bucks a household, you know, and you're gonna force them to pay the $200? Or you're gonna pick up the tab? I mean, it's almost a million dollar tab in order to convert. Our contract doesn't run out until 2026, but the vendors already approached us about wanting to take a look at this. Now, if there's a savings, we don't know yet, but we know with the next contract, it's gonna be, we're going to have to make that investment, and we're gonna have to ask the people either to raise and appropriate the money, for about a million dollars to do it, you know, or have a surcharge to their trash bill to have everybody pay the 200 bucks to do it.
Does this have to do with the, I mean, how does the ARPA money fit into that?
Or, again, enter, give yourself, you have time here. Do you want to go and talk to the vendor who's already approached us on this matter? Find out if there's a savings of us, if we, if we agree to it, and then use the federal money.
But our contracts aren't up until 2026, so that won't fall into line with that.
Our approach does, if we're wanting to talk about it, doesn't mean you don't, you entered the negotiations early, by the way, and if they're, if it's a win-win for everybody, then you renegotiate the contract.
Okay, so is that at the top of your list?
No, this is something else that we need to consider.
Can you give me three things that's on the top of your list? You're, you're giving me, you're gonna just keep giving me 10 more things. Can you give me three things at the top of your list, please?
I don't know that I'm prepared to give you the three tonight, but, no.
Okay, I'll start. Can I ask, on the, if it's okay? May I?
Please.
So, on the proposals, the two extra sheets, you know, I'm just questioning if they'll make the timeline. So I'm asking this to Abby, the down, the sewer project is $2.37 million. You have emphasized in the past.
Downtown sewer.
Historic center, safety buildings, schools, library, is $2.37 million. And what you've emphasized in the past, just tell me if I'm right or wrong, is that if we don't do it now, it goes up a lot more in the future. That's one thing I've heard. I believe also that it will, if we don't do it, the system we already have in place for the schools is at higher risk of failing because we don't use it enough, it's not utilized enough. And this would be a good investment to protect what we already have, but also would be a savings for the town in the long run by doing that project. The only question I guess I have, unless I've given inaccurate information, is can we, can we get this spent by that time?
Mr. Harbert.
Well, I would be hesitant to say that for a long, the life of the existing plant at the high school and preschool, I don't know about that. Is it more efficient to operate that plant if it's old, for lack of a better term? Absolutely. So there's an efficiency there. The price originally was 100,000, was a million dollars. Too many other projects would be more important at that point. The next year was a million five. Last year, the, the, really, it just missed the cut. I mean, people really on the capital, this has been on the capital committee for a while. It was originally Joe Foddy's idea a long time ago, when he told us we could get the price for 100 dollars to the ivory store, which clearly was wrong. The last price was a year ago, it was 200. But we also voted to fund the engineering work to get the project done. And Mr. Preasey has been in charge of it since then, and has been in touch with the engineers, and it is of his estimation that this is the price today, and that we can't get it done within that time.
Okay, so this becomes number one on my list, because this is something that we may not fund for a long time, and the price is gonna keep going up. And I have heard from the CPC chair that in fact, the maintenance is an issue when it's not being used. It becomes an issue. I believe that to be the case from someone who seems to know that, that side of the business. So that is my number one, and then my number two is the fire station renovation. With those two projects, the money's already gone. So, I mean, I don't need to go any further than that. If I had to, I could, but those two are the highest priority projects in my mind, because I don't know when we'll ever do a sewer, and we've gotta get the fire station done. They've been in the building, it needs to be taken care of.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I, the, I wanted to say something, this is not one of your, hardly one of your really discussing, but it is a piece of it. Mr. O'Leary mentioned the third meeting house. The third meeting house is a part of the facilities master plan project. And we've looked at it, we have had engineers and technicians through it, and a tremendous amount of work and repairs have happened to that building and are, and are continuing to happen. So it is not that this building is being ignored. And I understand and desire to put an elevator in it and do this and that. And the architects, by the time they finish the report, which is sort of sidelined to some degree because of COVID and the fire station, will include, you know, a prospective design or some sort of conceptual use, either as a continuing senior center or in the event that the community center passes muster, as some other town uses. So it is on, on our radar, and it is being worked on.
Thank you.
May I just, just add a comment? So, I'm not anti-kids' spot, I'm not anti-community, anybody who knows me, I'm all about the community. It's just for this purpose, this, you know, this is what these funds are ideally suited for. Anybody who is on this list that wants to come forward with their project, they go to town meeting, they make their case, the town is generous, they support these kind of things, they can do that. But for the purposes of ARPA, I can't think of a better use than the sewer project at the school street and the fire renovation. I think those are the highest priority ones, and that pretty much eats up the entire budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wallner. Mr. Studo, can you give me top two, top three?
Sure. So, uh, one last question I had, um, regarding kids' spot, that I need some refresher from the meeting. Was there a deadline? Do I remember correctly, is there was a deadline that a lot, that did not allow the wait to town meeting, or was that something that was not going to be the case?
Mrs. Wallner, please, can you?
The point was, we're prepared to get the designer in, which means we get the members out, and we could order equipment, and get the site work done. We stopped that right there. So we're designing ready, as soon as we get a designer on, we'll have the numbers, and then we can decide to do half of it, part of it, all of it, with whatever, you know, we can use the funds for. So if we got ARPA funds, we would be done by June 2024 if we wanted to.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that really well. I, I can't hear from the back.
If we understood that it got passed tonight, pretend, just pretend it gets passed tonight, we would hide, we're talking to the designers this week by Friday, and we're gonna pick which design we're gonna use, and then we get quotes, because we can tell them how much money we have in pocket now. Otherwise, we're meeting with the designers saying we only have 175,000, and that's what we're starting to work with now. But if we were approved, it would be done by June, July of 2024.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, if, if there's just a couple, I mean, Madam Chair, I think the, um, the fire station renovation, and I know some of these things are going to cap, I mean, and then, you know, I, I just think the kids' spot thing, based on what I've heard, right? So just so everyone knows, I, I'm out, just because of the, my, the, my kids and the age groups they're in, you know, I'm, I'm out in these fields all the time. So I can tell you that this is not something that is not, this is heavily supported. I mean, maybe not by everybody, but by everybody that frequents these fields. So that's what I'm going from, that this is something that I can genuinely say of, but I don't think that there would be a majority of the people that would push back and say, I can't believe you spent this on ARPA. So that's how I look at it for kids' spot, and then I do agree that we need to, we definitely have to get the ball rolling on the, you know, to see exactly what we're coming up against to, uh, get this, uh, fire station to where it needs to be from a public safety. So, I mean, Madam Chair, I'll give you those two. I mean, granted, that's all, that's only a little over a million, so there'd be more left over, but, you know, I, I, I think, I think after that, it's just a matter of, if there's only a little bit left over, that after that, it's just a matter of maybe taking the remainder of whatever doesn't get decided, and that conversation goes to capital. And then capital get, knows that, hey, the select board did not appropriate this money, with in mind that maybe some suggestions can get put by capital of what could it get spent on? And then instead of us five coming up with our top three, it becomes with the remainder of, or whatever comes out of tonight, it's something where, this is what capital said. These are the things, we still have the funds, so you want to pay cash, or do you want to fund it next year? So, those are the two, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Mani Pelli?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I am actually prepared to make a motion on nine specific items. I won't do that now, but I'll tell you what that motion would be. Number one, to use $600,000 of ARPA funds for the park and Central Street design in full traffic signal. Number two, $415,000 for the design and construction of North and Central intersection. Number three, $80,000 for the library fire alarm upgrade. Number four, $40,000 for the police fog system upgrade. Number five, $785,000 for the fire station project, which I think every single one of these is absolutely crucial and necessary. Number six, $50,000 to clean and renovate the gazebo on the town common. Number seven would be.
What was that one, Kate?
Clean and renovate the gazebo on the town common.
On the town common, yes. We never use it because it's filthy. Number eight.
Should plant some grass over there too, on the right-hand side.
I can't, I'm sorry, Miss Wheeler, I can hardly hear.
No, I said, I said, I, I like that idea, but also the, the grass, the whole right-hand side of the common needs to be replaced, but all right, go ahead.
All right, okay, well, this is just some throwing these ideas.
Wait a minute, I thought, I thought that Mr. Wheeler said that he was going to do some beautification there.
For sidewalk improvements, I don't necessarily know if it was related to the town, the gazebo that's there. But let me just finish my list here. So that was, I'm sorry, I put the fire station twice, because I obviously think that's supremely important. Number, number seven is a portion, I had a balance of 717,000, which I think a portion should definitely go into some design or engineering for the downtown sewer project. I, I know that that's been in the works and studied and reviewed, so I, I'm thinking that can make a deadline. And, and number eight would be some portion, although I, and I hear Mr. Studo, some portion of funds, a nominal amount, because there's an enterprise fund that's supposed to be covering these type of upgrades, and again, that project filtered its way through already CIPC, and we're getting different figures and amounts for that project, and I'm not quite clear on. So it already had $225,000 worth of funding, so how that jumped to 375, I'm still not clear on why that, that request is for that amount. But I, I'm, I'm willing to, if we have a consensus on it, consider some small portion towards that, towards that project, to help get that project completed. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary, do you still not want to?
No, I, I believe that the downtown sewer project is critical. Again, I was also a member of the Secondary School Building Committee that built the wastewater treatment plant as part of the project, which was built, scope and scale, to include and allow for, to tie in, and there is some efficiencies and economies of scale as far as keeping it utilized, and there are some additional steps that need to be taken when it's underutilized. So it makes sense to get these things tied in. So to me, that's a huge project that, that should be undertaken, and we should embrace it, and should get it done. Because again, we've got septic systems at the, the library septic system is front of the fire station.
Right.
You know, so you have the library, fire station, Damon Tavern, third meeting house, bachelor school, and then, to me, that, that's like a no-brainer, you know, for sure. Fire station study, again, something that needs to be done, that's fine. And I don't know if there's anybody left over.
That's, that's up to.
But, but, you know, to me, you know, kids' spot, again, there needs to be some allocation if there's some resources available. That particular, just as we talked about the basketball courts and the, and the, the other court, the other court there for the skateboard court, you know, if those were done with labor of love and donations of people in this community, now we have an obligation to maintain it and keep it up. Excuse me. The kids' spot is a gathering place, is a sense of community, and has been for the last 34 years, and, and it should be maintained by the town. It should be back to at least what it was, if not enhanced significantly. Because, again, my kids are in their 30s now, and it was utilized then, when it was first there, it was a huge success, and has been for the last 34 years. So, if there's money available.
Okay, so I'll give you my top ones. I originally had the Central Street sidewalks on there because I feel like it's never gonna happen otherwise. It's a safety issue for kids walking to school. It enhances the park, people can access it better. It enhances the park, people can access it better. But nobody else was bringing that up. So I'm trying to look for some consensus. I would be willing to change that to the downtown sewer, because I'm seeing a big consensus with that. The fire station and the Kid Spot, I have on my list. The one thing, Kate did mention it, in the big picture of the intersection, but I would like to bring back up the traffic light at Central and 62. I had agreement with Mrs. Mani Pelli and I that that was an important part. First of all, it's already there for three years. After three years, it's gonna come down. If we want to put a permanent one in, now the taxpayers are gonna have to pay for it. Instead, now, we could do this with the ARPA money, it would be done. People are gonna be used to it. I heard from Mr. Studo and Mr. Walner that they wanted to wait and see how it went when school started. Well, today was first day of school, and it went well.
That's what I heard.
Really?
Yes. From the fire chief? I mean, from the police chief?
I'll tell you what I experienced, because I signed first day of school. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what happened. I came down the bottom of Oakdale Road. It took me three and a half minutes to take a right-hand turn out of Oakdale Road towards Central Street, because from the light past Oakdale Road, traffic was backed up. I then took a right, and went down to Freedom Drive, and the traffic from Central Street was already back, all the way back to the dancing school. I turned on to Freedom Drive, turned around, went to take a left to go in. I couldn't, when the light turned green, I couldn't go left, because there wasn't room for me to head east on Route 62. The light changed, I had to wait a whole section signal, I was able to go the second time. So, and again, I saw the police officers there, you know, observing, and where they were observing from. But I'm telling you what I experienced first day of school. Unfortunately, I wasn't around this afternoon to see how it was this afternoon.
So you had to wait...
Again, I don't mind waiting.
Three minutes.
No, 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 but I can't take a right. I'm not saying crossing traffic.
I'm gonna give you the point of Central Street, which, forever, because I've lived on it, and took my kids to school, is backed up all the way up Central Street, because this car in the front has to wait and play chicken. When can I go? When can I turn? When will somebody let me out? You don't have that anymore. Now everybody gets a turn, and cars can move out of Central. So for 62, you had three-minute wait.
No, no, that was just to get onto 62. But no, but then, coming back, there was a tractor trailer coming out of Central Street heading north, because it was too big, up on the sidewalk, went up on the sidewalk, blocked the intersection, had to back up, go through, two sets of lights, unable, nobody was able to access. So there's no doubt.
Remember this, Chestnut Street is closed.
No, I know that.
When Chestnut Street reopens, you're gonna have a truck situation.
I will concede.
Yeah.
It certainly is safer, because nobody's traveling fast, that's for sure, and people traveling north and south on Central Street, easier access.
Yes.
Safer access, I suppose, not so much easier or even quicker. And by the way, when I left here at the last meeting, I went down North Street to Central Street, and I sat three minutes at the light, and there was no traffic anywhere, and I can't go left on me. So, but anyway.
Ms. Gilbert, I'm just gonna refer to you, because you mentioned that you observed this morning, so I just wanted to get your input.
Yeah, we've been, you know, we're always concerned about the opening of school, both in terms of the flow of traffic and, you know, the facilities. A number of us, including myself, are in touch with the school administration. But today, we were focused on the traffic and the flow of traffic in the vicinity of Park Street and the Middle High School, as well as the Bachelor School. And, you know, the report from the police department was that things went well. They reported that there was approximately a three-minute period of time where there was a backup that went pretty far down, westbound on Park Street to almost the dancing studio. So, you know, there was a period of time where there was a backup, but it seemed like it was pretty short in its amount of time. But it certainly was severe for that short amount of time, no doubt about that. There was a backup, similarly, from the eastbound side of town or westbound side of town, so going out toward Christopher's and past to Washington Street. Similar backup, not related to the traffic light, but something that we generally see the first day of school.
See that anyway, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, I think, I know the police chief and I, I think both were pleased with how things went, given what normally happens the first day of school in the center of town. We're gonna continue to monitor it and see what happens, but, you know, I think that we were pleased with what we saw.
Thank you. Mr. Wong?
Yeah, so I am, when I've asked people in town how they feel about signals at that spot right now, they can't imagine it going away. However, I think that we shouldn't be the ones to decide. I think we should actually put it on the warrant for the next town meeting coming up, and let the town decide if they want to have signals there or not. I think we should, and Michael, you think you're gonna check to see, did we basically say no, or did we just pass?
So I think you're gonna find an argument being made that says that, you know, bringing an item back to town meeting, being substantially the same form, would require approval by the Finance Committee prior to a consideration taking place.
Okay.
Within a year. Beyond a year, you wouldn't need that.
Well, I think, I think the reason why I think it's a good idea is because I don't, I think the people that would be impacted would come out to town meeting and decide whether they like it or not, and they will have had a month's worth of experience to know if that's right or not. I think it's kind of wrong for us to decide. I think we should put it on the town warrant, I think it should come up, and they should decide, because we have to do it urgently. I would also suggest one other thing.
Can I just respond to that?
Sure. Well, just let me just finish my last thing, is that if you actually drive up the Serpentine, you know, the S to go up to the high school, if you go a third of the way up and look in the back of the softball field and look all the way down toward the baseball field, there's a natural path that goes right down there. And so I can imagine a one-way street in the morning, people could come in right at the intersection of Hayver Hill and Winter Street there. You could, you could take that immediate right to the Bachelor?
You mean, Haverhill Park?
Yeah.
Across from Ryus?
Yeah, across from Ryus.
The back driveway.
That side, that side could be coming up the backside. They could go up behind, behind the building there, up to the, to the main drive and connect up. You'd have to break through the guardrail, but I don't see that as a big deal. And then at, during the day when they're coming home, you reverse the one-way, so they would only be able to go down the other way. And we should look at that, because I think that would be a potential way of staging more people to get in and also to get out, and free some of the traffic. And it looks, I mean, if you look at it, there's a natural path right there. It's relatively steep, but it could be a natural path that could make it all the way down to the backside there. So that's my comment.
So just to respond to you saying you want to take it back to town meeting, first of all, when we went to town meeting, that was a vote for bond, for to bond this. It failed by very little. The reason I'm bringing this up is because tax dollars wouldn't have to pay for it. So I feel like part of the fail of that vote is tax dollars, and people maybe not wanting to spend their tax dollars on that. So, I mean, I just feel, it's something that's working, it's something that people are gonna be very used to. I'm getting, I got, I have gotten all positive comments except for one. I just feel like after three years, we're not, I don't foresee us taking that down. I foresee a light being permanently put there, and I'm just trying to save tax dollars and get it done now, save a lot of money, because the design can put it in there now, it'll save us in three years what that traffic light's gonna cost, and design, and everything else. I'm just trying to save tax dollars on all of that. That's all. That's why I keep bringing it up.
So if I just may comment, the two things is the sewer is $2.4 million, and the plan is $800,000. So if you add that up, that heats up all the ARPA funds that we have. We don't have anything else extra, so something's gonna be underfunded even there, which is possible. I mean, I assume that's possible, but just the two projects that we seem to have some consensus on.
So what we have consensus on is the fire station, the downtown sewer, and the Kid Spot.
Well, but you're out of money, because if you look at the $2.4, and you add this $800,000 onto it, now we're at $3.2 million.
I'm not saying we have to, I'm trying to get consensus, so then we can narrow it down, and we can decide what it is we want to do. Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, will you start entertaining motions? I mean, we're, the horse has been dead for an hour, and we're just, and we're sardine.
Of course, you're kind of getting in...
I think, I think we can entertain motions, yes. Mr. Gilbert?
Madam Chair, through you, I certainly, I don't want to, I want to just provide information. So I do want to remind the board that in the spring, I submitted the project for the downtown sewer, Town Center sewer, to Senator Markey and Senator Warren for potential congressionally-directed funding. We won't have an answer on that right away, certainly not before a town meeting, certainly not tonight, and possibly not even until the very end of this calendar year. And while I'm hopeful, I think where we did get funded last year for $1.5 million, it's probably working against us to be funded, but I just, I just want to disclose that and remind folks of that fact, so that if I'm here with another bucket of money, I guess we can revisit what we're gonna do at that point in time.
The thing is, the federal funds would not necessarily be 100% of what we're looking for.
It may not, it has to be a match. I just want to remind folks of that. It shouldn't, I wouldn't let that affect whether or not you can own that path, I just want to make note of it, that there's a remote chance that that could come through in some sort of funding. I would say it's probably a remote.
If you get $500,000, you still have to come up with $1.8 million, $1.9 million to do it. And that's your bonding, that's your financing, whereas this gets it done.
So, I mean, we don't necessarily have to vote to fund the entire project, maybe we could do a portion of it.
Or you could make an adjustment later.
I'm not in favor of funding the entire project, just to be clear. I know why we're all just chit-chatting about it. I don't act, I'm not in favor of funding the whole thing, because we don't even, we don't even have a contract ready, never mind shovel-ready.
Yeah.
But something to final, the final design phase?
Yeah.
Move that along, some earmark for that, I'm definitely in favor of, but certainly not the $2.370.
Okay, so Mr. Studo?
Can I give my motion?
Sure.
Madam Chair, I move to appropriate $785,000 for the fire station renovation, final design bid documents.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for the fire station funding, and I have a second. Mrs. Mani Pelli? Mr. O'Leary?
Okay. I'll send you for a little discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. I'm sorry, I'm very bad at that.
It's okay.
I feel like we've discussed it already.
I know, but you gotta say it.
But yes, any further discussion?
Oh, good.
Okay. Anyone else, any further discussion on that? Okay, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Mani Pelli?
Aye.
And the chair is aye.
Okay.
So that passes. We have appropriated...
Madam Chair, I move to appropriate $600,000 for the design and construction of Park and Central Street, and for the addition of full traffic signalization at Park and Central Street.
Not the traffic light. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, just to get to the vote.
Okay, so I have a motion to appropriate $600,000 for Park and Central with the traffic light, and I have a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, for design and construction and full traffic signal.
Okay. What's the motion? Mr. O'Leary?
Again, I don't believe we should be using any of the ARPA money for money that's already been appropriated, bonded, and it's gonna be paid for. And as far as the full signalization, I'm opposed to it, obviously have been opposed to it, and I think it needs to run its course, and it doesn't rise to a priority level in relation to other proposals that have been before us.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
Madam Chair, and I already, we already talked about this a lot of times. I'm actually gonna make a motion on all the public safety projects, especially the intersections that need to be completed. Anything that's on here for bond, some of it's on...
So, are you, then your last motion?
Yes, yes. I'm gonna, no, this isn't my last motion, no. We're to the motions portion.
She's gonna make them one at a time.
Okay, but this is the motion on the floor?
Yes, that's in response to why, why I think it's important. It doesn't matter if it's bonded, I, we can rescind, put to town meeting to rescind or repurpose the bond for a different project. But these are already underway, under contract, under design, ready to go. So we can repurpose those bonds for other important projects, instead of borrowing for these projects when we have ARPA funds to use and available.
Mr. O'Leary?
Again, I think it's important to stress that if we take the money that we've already bonded for, all you're freeing up in total for $2 million is approximately less than $200,000 for future projects. That doesn't allow for, that means you have to borrow more to get other projects done, as opposed to doing things that aren't already appropriated for. You get more bang for your buck when you don't redo what you've already done. So, strongly opposed to doing that, because again, it's not enough money available for us, again, you're freeing up $200,000 to bond $2 million worth of projects, but you have to come up with the other $1.8 million in order to get what you need, and we're not gonna be able to do that, we can't afford to do that. So I think it's a poor use of the funds.
Any more discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor, I have a second. Mr. O'Leary?
No.
Mr. Wong?
No.
Mr. Studo?
No.
Mrs. Mani Pelli?
Yes.
And the chair is yes. It fails three to two.
I would like to make a motion.
Mr. Walner?
Okay, I move that we allocate $1.8 million towards the, as it's listed here, downtown sewer project, which is also the same as our high school, middle school, public safety buildings in Hager.
$1.8 as opposed to what the $2.?
$1.8, because we don't have enough money. We just spent $800,000 on the fire.
Oh, second?
We have $1.893 left, roughly.
Right.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to appropriate $1.8 million, which is the remainder?
Except for $93,000.
Except for $93,000.
Okay. To go towards the downtown sewer, and I have a second for Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just add that, I think that's putting way too much money on an expenditure we're not even clear, so we're gonna lose that money if we do that, especially if we're soliciting other funds, and we don't even have a report back yet on what other funds are available for sewer infrastructure. So that's not anything that's project or shovel-ready or final design or anything else like that. I don't mind having a portion for some sort of final design connection, et cetera, but the whole balance, I think, can be spread amongst several other different types of projects. This is my opinion.
Mr. Wong?
I believe that Joe Perizzi could update us on that, just so we know exactly what we're talking about. Joe, can you update us, please?
Mr. Perizzi?
Where that project is at?
I can give you a quick summary. So we already have design funds for that project. We have been working with Western Sampson engineers. There certainly has been a little bit of a halt on moving forward design based on, you know, the type of concerns, or costs, one of them certainly, and the other is, you know, what kind of system do we want, gravity or force or some combination of things? But I did email the engineers, and I did ask them if this project would be ready to go and meet the ARPA deadlines. A contract by December 31, 2040, said yes. Would it be completed before December 2026? He said yes. I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow, just to sort of tick start the project again and see what the design requirement would be to... see what the design requirement would be to finish, and we'll have more information. All indications are, yes, it would meet those deadlines.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion on the floor for 1.8 million to go towards the downtown sewer, and I have a second, by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
No.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
No.
That leaves me.
He made it after you.
I'm going to say no, because of the amount. I don't, I don't want to see it eaten up that much, if we can get a few other things done. So, maybe less of an appropriation.
Madam Chair, I, I move to appropriate the sum of $415,000 for the north and central intersection design and construction.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mrs. Manu Pelli for the north and central construction and design, is that what you said?
Intersection, design and construction.
Okay. And I have a second from Mr. Studo, further discussion? None?
How much was it?
What was the amount of that? Mrs. Manu?
$415,000.
Madam Chair, through you?
That's what's in the warrant.
That wasn't the amount that we borrowed? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Manu Pelli?
262. 262,000.
So we'll amend that to 262,000? And I have a second from Mr. Studo.
Is that true? I didn't hear you.
What's that?
I didn't hear that.
You didn't hear what?
On a motion to amend, we have to vote.
Oh, oh, the motion to amend, okay.
Was the motion made? I didn't hear.
Do we have a motion to amend that motion for 262,000 from 415?
Second.
I, I need a motion.
Oh.
Yeah, I did. I moved to amend, even though I don't understand why it's in the warrant as a different amount than it is on the current procedures, proceeding, but I guess we can talk about that.
Different sources.
I'll amend it to 262. I'll move to amend my motion or withdraw and make it again as 262 for the design and construction of north and central street intersection, use of ARPA funds towards that cost.
Mr. Studo, did you say?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second, further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
No.
Mr. Walner?
No.
Mr. Studo?
Yes.
Mrs. Manu Pelli? Mrs. Manu Pelli?
You muted.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, and the chair is yes on that one, which is important. 262.
Now we're at?
So where are we at now?
1.63, 1 million.
Madam Chair, I move 1.5 million.
This one, I like the US Senate now with the amendment.
1.5 million for the downtown sewer project.
What was that, Mr. O'Leary, I'm sorry?
1.5, the downtown sewer. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion for 1.5 million for the downtown sewer, and I have a second from Mr. Walner, further discussion?
Project is too important to pass by.
I, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
And maybe Mr. Gilberto. If we appropriate this, right, Mr. Gilberto, and then get money, is it the same like we were talking about the bigger wastewater project, where we can appropriate it, but if we get money, we don't have to spend it? Or no?
Madam Chair, through you, without having consulted with the finance director, I think we're going to have an answer before we're entering into a substantial construction contract. So I, we're going to know if congressionally-directed funding has materialized probably by the end of the calendar year, and I doubt, yeah, I doubt we'll have a design this calendar year. So I doubt we'll have a design contracted for construction by that point. So if that were to happen, unfortunately, we would be back having further conversation about what to do with those funds.
But our ask could also be less.
But, but that's my question. Could we, let's say we appropriate this 1.5, right, and the total is 2.37, and let's say they pay for the entire thing, just a dream, could we then reappropriate that 1.5? Because we're in the timeline?
We could, yes. That's, I'm trying to convey, yes, we could.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'm not, yes, I'm not in favor, only because we have other, a couple of other projects that I think we should consider, but I am in favor of earmarking some, just not the total sum amount, especially because there's so much money out there for these types of projects, and I'm hoping that will come through for us. But I am in favor, but just not for the whole balance. So I won't be voting in favor of this.
Can I suggest an amended number?
I think we already have a second on this one, I think we have to vote on it.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion and a second, we're on discussion. So, we can go ahead and vote on it?
He can, he can make a motion, he can.
Do you want to amend it? Do you want to amend it?
We would just vote on the motion to amend.
I mean, I move to amend the appropriation number to 1 million from 1.5.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, an amended motion.
A motion to amend.
A motion to amend from 1.5 to 1 million.
If it prevails, it's the 1 million that it gives to a second vote. If it doesn't, it goes back to the 1.5. The motion goes back to the 1.5.
Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, through you, the project was submitted, I think, at 2.1 million. That's what we believe the construction cost is going to be. We're talking at a number that's now substantially lower than that. Is the intention to pursue funding at town meeting to make up the difference? Only because I want to make sure we keep the timeline, and we're going to, you know, at 1.5 million, maybe we get lucky with the bidding. At 1 million, I think we're, we're probably not going to be having enough to do.
And by the way, it's 2.37 million, not 2.1.
Thank you.
Even further.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So I, not to frustrate the conversations, but I, you know, at 1.5, again, maybe we get lucky with the bidding. At 1 million, we're going to be short. I think there's no doubt about that.
So there's no point unless we get above 2? Is that fair?
We just, we, I think the DPW director and I would like to have 2.3 million in hand for bidding, but I think if we start getting in that mid-million-dollar range, if we're really pushing it.
And just a reminder?
I don't understand how appropriating, appropriating ARPA is going to impact anything at all. If we, if we were moving forward that we didn't have ARPA, we'd still be going to town meeting asking for more money, for the full, full amount. I don't understand what.
We'll be asking for substantially less at town meeting.
Madam Chair, through you, we were not intending to request funding for this project at the October town meeting. We certainly could, and I think we probably should, if we're going to obligate ARPA funding. I'm not, I'm not asking the board not to do it, I'm just pointing out that we're going to need to, you know, to be in the best position to go to, you know, finish the design, go to bid, and spend the money and time, we would need to have more than, you know, even a million five in hand. So, I'm sort of asking, we, is the consensus to, to go forward and ask for that at town meeting, you know, in order to bridge that gap? Again, we could get, you know, we could be fortunate, we could be awarded federal money after the fact, and none of this would even matter, but, you know, I, I think it's going to be a stretch that that's going to happen, honestly, because we did get that million five, and we're going to be actively spending it at the same time, so. I just, I feel like I ought to point that out.
So, I guess, can I just ask a question? Is 1.5 okay, or are we, are you saying it's not, it's not workable?
I think we're hoping the market works in our favor at that number, and maybe we can adjust the design and.
I mean, is that workable?
There are some alternatives that could be less costly, but, you know, they would be different than what was, I guess, intended to be our, our design, to be accommodation of gravity, force, mains, and pump stations, one pump station at the bottom of Hill, pumping that down, but there are some alternatives that could be less costly.
All right, well, 1.5's on the table, right?
No, actually, there's an amendment for 1 million that needs to be voted on.
Unless you want to withdraw it.
Or unless you want to withdraw the amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment, any amount that we earmark in ARPA funds is going to help this project along, so I'm not understanding why infusing into it, we need 1.5 million of ARPA is even being discussed here. And I'm concerned about the, the design, I, we just heard was well underway, so we don't need money for design. So now talking about alternative designs, that's, that, we're going down a different pathway now, so that, that's not making a lot of sense either. Is there a cheaper way that we should be studying? Should we just earmark a portion to look at a different type of design? And if so, what would that portion be?
We haven't, we have a low debt alternatives at this stage. I mean, the DPW director submitted the request in the form that it was submitted to capital committee a year ago, because it wasn't funded. Again, we're looking for other funding sources, but they haven't materialized. I, I'm only, I'm not trying to confuse the issue, but I am trying to make clear that, you know, we may not be able to get the project done for the amount of money that, that we're discussing. We can try to adjust the designer, I mean, we may have, you know, a better answer as soon as tomorrow. We could have a worse answer. They could say that 2.3 million is really 3 million, or 3.5 million in today's market. I mean, those are all questions. I, I guess I'm only saying, you know, if you want to make sure we spend the money and time, we need to have enough to enter into a contract to do it.
Could we pull from Pulte to make up the balance?
Through a vote at town meeting, yes.
So I, I guess, well, can we get rid of the 1 million one first? Let's go back to the original one.
Do you want to withdraw the 1 million, Mr. Studo, amendment, or do you want to vote on that?
I mean, let's vote and see where it goes.
Okay. Did I have a second on the amendment?
I already seconded it.
Okay. Yes, all right. So, Mr. O'Leary?
No.
Mr. Walner?
No.
Mr. Studo?
Yes.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. So we're going to appropriate 1 million, or, or, we, that was for the amendment? Okay, so now we're going to vote on the 1 million?
That was the 1 million, no? Or no, oh, I see.
That was the amendment for 1 million, from 1.5, which passed. So now we would need to vote on appropriating the 1 million, the million dollars to the downtown sewer. Any more discussion?
So, for the majority that just voted for the million dollars, what is the plan? Are we going to insert article in October town meeting warrant?
I would.
For 1.3 million, or 1.375 million? The chair, no, I'd yes.
Yes.
What is the question?
What would we, what is our plan for the remainder? Would we be entering into, an article into the town warrant for the remainder of what's needed?
I'm sorry, what was our plan for the full 2.3 million outside of ARPA fund? What was the plan to be moving it forward as an article, wasn't it?
I think we have the million, though, you, you put the million, it's there. You wait to see where Mr.
No, but I'm asking, what, what was the plan already? Because this is that far along in progress. What was the plan for this? To borrow? That would have to require an article, of course. That is the plan to get it paid for. So, leaving a million towards it just makes it a lesser amount to get a request to borrow on. So I'm not even understanding the question.
Madam Chair, through you, the intention, I expect, is that the Department of Public Works would have submitted it to the capital improvement planning committee, and they would have considered it as part of their review of projects during the course of the next six months, in advance of next June's meeting. Could have been expedited if we were awarded federal funding, but that, that's likely what would have happened. I, we were not, unless the DPW director felt differently, we were not expecting to ask for funding for that project at October town meeting. And with regard to the, the form, there is an article on there for capital budget amendment, and I would recommend if we are going to pursue funding, if, that that would be the way to do it.
You're just, we're recommending the project to move forward, but we don't know for sure yet where the, or all the funding sources are. But if those funding sources come up short, we would have to put an article on to fund it, whether by bond, or free cash, or whatever other means we have, appropriate from J.T. Barry for the balance that's remaining.
Correct, and.
That's what we normally do.
So, Madam Chair, through you, in order to keep, for the project to proceed, we have a, you know, on paper, a deficit of 1.3 million. We're saying, I think, we could probably try to work with the engineer and make that number less, we just don't know how, how much less, and we would come back to you and say, okay, here's what we need for the difference. And I know I've answered a lot, but I believe the finance director is asking to speak as well.
Yes, please.
Our borrowing for our entire capital plan for June was 1.5 million. It's our full capacity, we can take this, this one project, we can't do anything else. No capital projects in June. So I recommend against the remainder giving from borrowing.
Remain what?
I recommend against the remainder giving from borrowing. I don't think.
Mr. Studo and Mrs. Manu Pelli, did you hear? Did you hear that?
It's not recommended, right? The finance director doesn't.
No other capital projects would be able to be funded.
Next year.
Next year. That would eat, eat it all up.
For borrowing, not for cash.
If, if, go to bond.
For borrowing.
Yes.
For borrow, yes, to go to bond. But we have J.T. Barry funds and other funding. If, if we can figure this out and see what other sources come in, we'll know what the balance is.
So then, the way to look at it is, if we approve a million, or even 1.5, if we approve anything short of the 2.37 requested?
Yeah.
The rest has to come from somewhere. We can't borrow. We know we have a bunch of money in other places, so, really, outside of having 2.37, we have to go somewhere, so, the question is, do we do some now, or do we just?
Wait.
Wait and do the whole amount later? But, because it doesn't seem like, I mean, Mr. Gilberto, I do not share your even little bit door open that we'll get lucky at 1.5. You may have just said that to say it, I don't, I don't even think that's a, no. I just don't share it. So to me, unless, unless you tell me that, like, 1.5 is, you might find somebody who is just, like, bored and waiting for us, then I think a million or 1.5, neither number makes, we need, we need more, right? So, so if that's the case, I mean, I mean, if that's the case, I would, I would draw my, my candidacy at this point, but I'm probably going to vote against my own amendment.
The amendment was already passed.
The amendment's passed, yes.
Whatever, whatever the new thing is for.
We need to vote on the million dollars for the downtown sewer. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, through you, I mean, another scenario is, we simply design a system to fit the budget. So that means some buildings.
I don't like the sound of that.
Some buildings are left out, is what happens there, most likely.
No.
I'm just.
Yeah, no, I know.
Being realistic, yeah.
Being realistic, yeah.
We can come back with a --
The other question I have, Madam Chair, is, again, if you go with a million dollars here now, you still, you can't go out to bid on. You haven't got enough money.
No.
You haven't got enough money. And again, we don't know what the federal government, if anything, and I'm not overly optimistic. We never do, we shouldn't be overly optimistic, because, you get it? That's great. We all agree, the project is important, should be done, it's pretty much ready to go, and it can meet the timelines. But if we don't appropriate the money to meet the timeline, then it's, then it's for naught. So let's find the money to appropriate the whole thing. If we get federal money to offset, great. And, you know, we have to do a town meeting warrant article. We do it. But we're being advised, and again, to my earlier point, where if we take this ARPA money and do things like we did north of Central Street, you're freed up about 20 grand for bonding, doing 262,000 dollars that was already bonded. 260,000, just got you 20 grand. It's too short, you can't do anything with it. That's why I'm saying it was a bad, it's a bad idea to do that. You take the 262, put it back on here, go to 1.5, all of a sudden you're 1.8 million dollars. You're getting a little closer to something that's palatable. And then you're going to find out whether you have your federal money coming in, and you're, yeah. So that's, that's why we shouldn't be doing anything that's already been bonded and paid for.
Right. Because you already had that money.
We already had the money, and it doesn't free up much. It frees up 10%.
But it opens up something else that can be bonded.
But then you have to pay for the rest of it. You're only going to, it only opens up 20 grand.
I'm with the motion. Can we move to --
Yes, Mr. Gilberto?
Do I have the floor? Madam Chair, through you. I mean, I, and I'm doing my iPad calculating here, but I think that the balance unobligated is 1,640,209 dollars. I mean, that's a substantial amount of the way there.
I have 1.64, yeah.
I don't know whether there's a willingness to consider that amount, and then neither the finance director and I to figure out a funding source for the difference after Mr. Perici meets with the engineers. I don't know whether there's an intention to fund other projects with that, whatever the delta is. But I put that out as, if there's consensus on the idea of the project, the 1.640 million dollars is, you know, we're making, we're closer, you know? And now we can bridge the gap with what will likely need to be cash in some way, shape, or form, you know, as soon as the October town meeting. So I put that out as a potential suggestion.
Madam Chair, I move to amend. The motion as amended, 3.64 million for the downtown sewer project.
Second?
All right, so I have a motion to amend from 1 million dollars to 1.64. And I have a second from Mr. Wallner. Further discussion?
Okay, so, so the project is 2.370?
Yeah.
And the motion is to --
1.64, what's left of what we have.
Whatever. And where are we going to come up with the rest? We have to go to a warrant, town meeting article for the rest, right?
Mr. Gilberto?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's correct. We have an article on to amend the fiscal year 2024 capital budget. That's a housekeeping article at this point in time. We've been doing it for the past couple of years. And the finance director and I will come with a recommendation to bridge the gap under that warrant article.
You'll make a motion to appropriate the balance under that housekeeping article?
Madam Chair, through you, it would be an amendment to the capital budget, the fiscal year 2024 capital budget. And we would recommend an amount based on Mr. Perici's meeting with the engineers and a funding source based upon the finance director's recommendation.
What would that be? What's the funding source?
Madam Chair, through you, I hope it to be free cash if the number's large enough. If it's not, a secondary option is funding available either in the capital improvement stabilization fund or from the sale of town or land. So we have, I mean, at least three options, we hope, that would be available to us to fund the difference, or the projected difference based on the engineers' reports.
Any more discussion?
I think it's really important that we approve this. We will have concluded our deliberations around this topic, and I think we're hitting the two priorities that we thought were really important. We're hitting the fire station, and we're hitting the sewer project.
And I think the community would look upon it as being --
Responsible.
Responsible.
Diligent. Yep, I think that's really important. And I think that the other projects, you know, just make good cases for them. At town meeting, if people want to bring those forward, kids' spot, things like that, you know, you'll get my support. But for this purpose, this is exactly what we should be doing. This is exactly what will provide benefits for us for decades to come.
Anyone else? All right, I have a motion on the floor for 1.64 million dollar amendment from the 1 million dollar. And I have a second. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Maniapelli?
Aye.
Chair is aye. So we now have?
No money left.
No, well, we didn't vote on it, right?
Oh, no, now it's supposed to happen now, okay, correct.
That was just the amendment, yeah.
We need one more, one more vote, correct, okay.
So now we need a motion?
On the main motion?
On the main motion.
As amended.
As amended. Any discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Maniapelli?
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Congratulations.
Aye.
Done.
Look at that.
I thank my colleagues.
May I raise one last thing while we're on this topic?
Yes.
Just because I, it was, it's something I would like the board to keep in mind, and I did mention this to the chair. We should really see if we can hear from our some funding for solar canopies, you know, on the lots, the parking lots that we have. And then tie that into some of those electric vehicle charging stations that we talked about. Think about that for another time. We're never going to get another ARPA, a part of ARPA, but there's other funds out there for us to be able to do that.
I've had a length discussion over the last week specifically about solar canopies and electrical charges. So absolutely. And Redding Municipal Light is ready to work with us, partner with us, talk with us. It's terrific. So it's something very exciting, we should really embrace it.
I would like to thank my colleagues.
Yeah.
Well done.
Got it done.
Got it done.
Joe's happy.
We're not done with them tonight, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Perici.
Joe's happy. Fire chief's happy. We already got a warrant article, so we're all set then.
So. Moving on to Fall Annual October Town Meeting Review Discuss Submitted Articles Will Warrant Article Recommendations Vote to Sign Town Meeting Warrant, which would make someone in the room very happy.
The constable, thank you.
Oh, is he still here?
Yes.
Madam Chair, through you, I'm going to go quickly through the articles, and if it's okay, I'm not going to go through the full-blown presentation. I think we're better served by discussing this during the warrant article hearing. But I'll review the warrant itself and its contents to make sure we're on the same page. So moving through, no, the first handful of articles are housekeeping items. I will focus your attention to Article 9, amend the fiscal year 2024 capital budget. That is a spot in which I expect the finance director and I, with the DPW director, will be recommending approval of funding to bridge whatever the projected gap is for the downtown sewer project. So just kind of making you aware of that. Still looking at whether we want to try to earmark anything for the 20 Elm Street litigation or not. We still stand in a very healthy position, I think, well in advance, well over $100,000 in funding available. We may recommend something to supplement that, but we're still working through those numbers. Article 11, appropriate money for fire station design development and construction documents. Given the board's vote with regard to the ARPA funding.
Whoa, 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 wait, Mr. Gilberto?
Yes.
Wasn't 11A and B, I mean, it's a point both of those because of what we did?
There's an order of issue, you're right. I'll take those next. Thank you, Mr. Studo. So they've already been renumbered because they've already made the adjustments on my computer.
Oh, okay.
That's why. So 11A and 11B in the board's packet were two wastewater-related articles. Based on your earlier discussion, based upon your vote to appropriate, to obligate $500,000 towards wastewater design, I assume the intention is to remove those two articles from the warrant.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before a motion is made to that, I hope we, myself and Mr. Wallner, accusing ourselves, time for discussion, deliberation, or conclusions on the vote regarding removal of those two articles.
Okay.
A motion would be to?
I think that was the motion second.
Yeah, the motion would be to remove our --
I feel here, Mr. O'Leary.
No, Mr. O'Leary just said that him and Mr. Wallner can't, they got to go.
So we need the motion, and then we need a second.
I'm so sorry, okay.
The motion would be to remove articles 11A and 11B related to wastewater.
That's what I thought you said.
Madam Chair, I move to remove Article 11A, 11B from the town warrant for October.
And second, and Article 12, right?
And 12. Well, no, because they can vote on 12.
A and B, 11A and B.
11A and B.
11A and B, I'm sorry. Second to your motion, Mr. Studo.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second. Mr., any discussion? Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Maniapelli?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. You may come back.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Similar discussion regarding what was Article 12 concerning funding for the fire station design development and construction documents. And I think Mrs. Earl just left the room. We have this article on, submitted by the Facilities Master Plan Committee. Do we wish to leave it on and move to pass it over?
Which one is this again?
This is the fire station design development, so the fund.
We already funded it.
Yeah, right.
I would suggest that we leave it on and pass over it so that if people have discussed, want to ask questions about it, we can explain it to them.
You also able to make?
I would, I would, we remove it.
I agree.
You can also do it.
Madam Chair, I move to remove Article 12.
Second.
Michael, please.
Wait a minute, Mr. Gilberto wanted to add something to that.
I know there's a motion and a second.
There is a motion and a second, but if you'd like to.
I only would, again, this is a suggestion. This project is going to have to come back to town meeting to be approved.
Right.
And it will likely involve a debt exclusion. So if you did want to take an opportunity to update town meeting as to the board's action and the fact that the project is proceeding, you could do so. You can choose to do it by leaving it on and passing it over. You could choose to do it under reports, reports of officers at the beginning. I just point that out, that we probably do want to say something at town meeting about this project because it'll be back before them.
That was my thought. But we have a motion to remove it, and we have a second to remove it on the floor. Mr. Studo?
Yeah, can we just, under Article 1? Somebody just say that that's what we did?
We could.
Madam Chair, you can do it, or somebody, right? I mean, it's the same thing.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any more discussion on that?
I kind of like the idea of leaving it on there, passing it over because it is a big project, it is coming forward. It, again, gives it more visibility and shows the commitment on the board's part to the project, of allocating ARPA funds towards it, and then we're going to, we'll be back.
We'll be back.
So, so, well, I generally like to shorten the warrant. I'm probably not going to be in support of the motion to remove it. I would have, I would have voted no, to leave it on, basically.
All right, so any further discussion on that? Okay, I have a motion to remove it. I have a second. Mr. O'Leary?
No.
Mr. Wallner?
No.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Maniapelli?
Aye.
And the chair is no. So it fails to remove. Do we have a motion to pass it over?
No, no.
We'll come, there's more motions later on that we can do after the constable signs it. Just highlight Article 12, appropriating funding for a bridge in Culverd Study. It's an important project that is a candidate for a warrant article, and we'll be here to talk further about that on September 18. Article 13, related to the Chestnut Street Bridge. We have language that we think is specific enough to get the authority to file a home rule petition once the design has advanced far enough to remove from Article 97 protection a very small portion of land under the Care, Custody, and Control and Conservation Commission on the southwest corner of the bridge. So picture on the DPW and Moynihan side. If you're heading from the DPW and Moynihan up toward the bridge, other side of the road, not where the house is, the property's under the Care, Custody, and Control of Conservation Commission, it's Article 97 protected. I think we've said it a couple of times now, we're going to need to do this. We didn't know how we would be able to do it without having a final design, but we think town council has written something here that will achieve that. So it's been showing up as a title only in the draft, and now we have language that's in here. A draft that you may have seen over the weekend refer to the Recreation Committee, that was an error. It's been, and it is under the Control and Conservation Commission according to the town's previous votes. So I think that that's been on and should stay on, the warrant, so that we can continue to move forward. We've, I think, talked at length about the opioid matters. There is a separate article on there for appropriating some of the funds that we've received for treatment mitigation and prevention, and we'll go through more detail on that at the next meeting. Again, just reminding folks, you know, Article 16 relative to the secondary school building project. This is intended to be a place into which we could put the proceeds of the settlement that we could then draw from once we have closed out with the MSBA and are looking to square up all of the borrowing with regard to this. square up all of the borrowing with regard to this. So it's a way to set aside those proceeds. We could talk further at a future meeting about whether we want to take all of the portion, the portion minus the legal fees. That's something that can be discussed, but this is a, an action we should take so that we're preserving that, that what is now free cash, the settlement money that we received for later use once we've closed out with MSBA. So I think everyone's attuned to that, right? Article 18, I'm just gonna highlight a bit. It's relative to entering into golf course management contracts. The language is written to give the Hillview Commission the standing ability to enter into contracts in excess of three years, subject to my approval.
Did you miss one of the appropriate money to cover?
He's skipping around.
Oh, he's skipping around.
Yeah, so that is, that's actually gonna become, I think, a housekeeping article, the Article 17. We did it, I think you may remember in June. It's written a little bit more generically here and it's just intended to make sure that we are squaring up all of our grant accounts, which we have many with the federal and state government. But Article 18 would actually convey a standing ability to enter into contracts for more than three years to the Hillview Commission. It was originally written as a one-time thing. We did it six years ago, I think it was, but I've worked with town council and we've proposed it here in a fashion that would actually give them the standing ability to do so, subject to the approval of the town administrator. And my hope is it'll give them more flexibility. There was just some minor changes to Article 19 with regard to the wording of it. That's relative to St. Teresa Street and the community planning commission's recommendation to proceed with that parcel first for potential conveyance. Article 20, there were some changes that were made with regard to the wording on the sustainable foodware packaging article. That was submitted by the recycling committee. Town council had some comment that they've offered and it's been reflected in the version that you're seeing here in the warrant. And the board can decide at a later point whether it wants to recommend it, recommend passing over, recommend a town meeting. And Article 21, the street acceptance, we're gonna be asking the board to have a hearing to actually take that article first at the warrant article hearing and have the street acceptance hearing as well. We're expecting it will go pretty quickly, that the folks will want that street to be accepted, but we can take care of that early and then we can move into the rest of the articles. We ended up with 21 articles with the removal of both of the Article 11s that were on there. Sorry, excuse me.
Yeah.
About Article 22.
Right.
There is a 22nd article, skip on the next page. So this is an article that was added at the direction of the board relative to a home rule petition concerning a retired police officer and the calculation of retirement benefits. The wording is pretty detailed in the article and I know there'll be a detailed present, there'll be a presentation made at the town meeting. The lead for motion's been prepared.
Let's sign it.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to sign the October.
What's it go?
What's that?
You awake?
Madam Chair, I move to sign the October 2nd, 2023 town meeting warrant.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli, are you still with us? I think she had to step away for a minute. The chair is aye.
Okay, we're good.
Absent? Absent.
That absent.
Is there another?
See, I'm staying, no, it's all.
We still got a little.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
Next up.
Where's warrant? Sign it.
Where is it?
Yeah.
Do I have it?
Yeah, you can print it to give it to him.
Oh, okay.
Get to tell him it's your free acting deed and all that stuff.
Madam Chair, do I need to come by town hall and sign up?
Yes.
We'll have to come back tomorrow.
He's gonna take it tonight, I think, so it's gonna probably.
It'll have three, you can get it.
But you'll have witnessed.
Come by tomorrow else?
Yes.
Yes.
You'll be able to sign that you witnessed to sign.
What was the answer for, do they need to come and sign it?
If they're able to come in the morning tomorrow sign, that would be fantastic. We'll have them available in Karen's office.
Are you available?
Late morning, you okay, Mike?
Whatever works for Congress. He asked if late morning was okay. Do you want to pick it up at four? Doug, does that work?
Doug, you get to sleep in.
Anytime, anytime you're 4:01, then I'll pick you up and get it done.
Okay, so we'll have it ready for you at 1:00. Great.
Mrs. Manu Pelli, are you able to do that?
Probably. It's all gonna depend on what happens around the Manu Pelli household tomorrow.
Next order of business is street acceptance, Eaton Circle.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to prolong the discussion, but we should probably have some votes on the articles.
Oh.
At least on those that the board's ready to recommend. And you can just pick those ones out and leave the rest as recommended town meeting.
That's fine.
There's only a handful.
We have motion?
We do, they're in the package.
Okay.
And I've bolded the ones that are ready to be done. I mean, if the board's agreeable, we could just take up the votes on the recommends and the rest I'll put as recommended town meeting. Because there's a handful that will be in that position, I imagine. Can you, I have all of the articles. I can point out which ones we should go, so we'll start with number one. Please, okay. So, Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 1, hearing and action reports of town officers and committees.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion?
Just, why can't we say we move to recommend Articles 1, 2, 3?
We can do that, I just have to kind of run through and figure out which ones.
Get it all done at one point?
Well, I just, I do have a discussion on this one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just, I hope that, you know, that the, that the wastewater project can give an update about where we are, because that's a great audience to deliver it to. So that's just, that's just a good place to do it. Anyways. If you bear with me one moment, I'm trying to give you, like, quick and dirty recommendations. You looking for me to add up all the recommends? I'm going through them right now. Okay, yeah, I can do that too if you want.
Your numbers may not correspond either.
Yeah, I'm gonna be off by one.
You're gonna be off by a couple. Two or three.
All right, so going, going quickly through, I have Articles 1, 6, 13. So they're gonna be off by one.
Yeah.
I mean, I can read the titles if you want.
Yeah, I don't think I need it.
1, 6, 13, 14, 16, 18, 21, and 22. So the notable ones, you know, 22 is the last one regarding the police officer. That's in the category recommend. 21 is the street acceptance. 20, which would be on recommended at town meeting, is the foodware packaging. I did not include 19, which is the St. Teresa Street. The board may wish to include that as a recommend. I don't know if you're ready to do that yet or not. I included 18 to recommend. That's the Hillview contracts. 16, creating the stabilization fund for secondary school building. I thought that's probably one we can recommend.
That's 15.
15 was appropriating money for the treatment mitigation prevention. We haven't talked about the details of that, so I left that as a recommended town meeting. 14 is to set the money aside from last year. That I think we should do, that's a recommend. 13, authorizing a home rule petition for the Street Bridge. And then 12, 11, 11 is gonna be a pass over. I'll come back to that one. And the rest are housekeeping that we just don't have the numbers on yet. So that's where I get the list from. Second.
Did we, we didn't, did we include the St. Teresa on there?
I didn't. If you want to put it on there, we can.
No, I think.
We can recommend it to him.
Yeah, let's do that. We might use that some discussion.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Articles 1, 6, 13, 14, 16, 18, 21, and 22.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend and I have a second. Any discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
And the chair is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to make, label is make, recommend that town meeting. Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 15, 19, and 20.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion to recommend a town meeting and I have a second. Any discussion?
That's gonna be a long meeting before the meeting on those.
17, you have 17 in the grant episode.
Oh, excuse me, and 17 was also included there. 17. 15, 17, 19, 20.
Second.
And 11 I held up.
And, um. Any more, did you want to have anything more?
Have they approved the amendment?
That wasn't a amendment. That, that's okay. It was included. It was a scriveness error, it was me.
That was part of the motion.
It's part of the motion.
All right. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Aye.
And the chair is aye.
Motion to pass over?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article 11.
It's the fire station.
Fire station.
Do I have a second?
We're gonna, we're gonna move to pass over. You sit there to discuss it.
Oh, okay.
Yep. That's why it's still on.
Yeah, I got you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry. Sleeping.
I'll give that one to Mr. Studo. I have a motion by Mr. O'Leary and a second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Aye.
Chair is aye.
That's it? Got everything?
Didn't worry.
It was for the warrant, thank you. Okay. The street acceptance?
I know. I've killed. I've already killed a few up here.
I think we're up to.
We are up to street acceptance, Eaton Circle, vote of intention.
There is a motion.
And order of notice.
There should be a motion on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I moved, Mrs. Chair. Madam Chair, I don't know why that's there. I move to sign the vote of intention to lay out Eaton Circle and the order of notice to be sent to others. Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary? Yes, Mrs. Manu Pelli.
How did this, is this a subdivision that we're accepting or is it a little background on it?
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you.
It's a subdivision off, off Mount Vernon.
It's a, I think, a seven-house subdivision off of Mount Vernon that's complete and now ready to be accepted. And the report of the town engineer and the planning commission's engineer recommended acceptance.
It's all in compliance with the requirements and all of that?
Yes, that's what we are informed, yes, Madam.
It has to seize any bonds or anything.
No, for this one, no.
For this one, maybe.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Aye.
And the chair is aye.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for July 2023 in the amount.
Oh, wait a minute, what? We have public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would anybody like to speak in public comment, either in the room or on Zoom?
I don't see anybody on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Wallner?
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for July 2023 in the amount of dollars as follows. General, $5,493.71. Labor, $611.20. Elm Street, $693. For a total of $6,797.71. Second.
I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. All right, we are to town administrators report.
Madam Chair, through you, just two quick items. First is, I'm working with RMLD to facilitate the installation of electric vehicle charging station at various town locations. The middle high school parking lot and the town hall are the first two locations that I anticipate signing license agreements for in the coming days. RMLD is eager to proceed with the installation on, on site here. And then the second item is that in response to the board's request, I did attach to copy of background information regarding the accessory dwelling unit bylaw with my report. And I know it was a lot of information with a variety of different versions of the bylaw, but hopefully it's helpful as at least starting point. And that concludes my comments.
Did you say that they're going to, they're gonna put them out here?
So the intention is to do one in the side parking lot down, kind of where the rear entrance is. And then the second location, I'm not sure exactly where the schools have worked that out at the middle high school campus. Can I just ask a question about that? Why those locations? What was the rationale behind that? Um, I think the middle high school, they feel that there would be a possibility for good utilization, given how long the staff is in one spot there. And I think we felt that this location has access to the highway, is, you know, does have a spot that we could probably make available for it without having to involve other municipal facilities. I don't think it's the only places we could have them, but just seemed like the first, the logical first two places. The only reason why I bring it up is because if I'm a, I have the electric car. If I go to charge up, it takes time for it to charge. It's good if I have somewhere to go. And if you don't have business at town halls, you're gonna sit in your car, you know what I mean? But unless you're a town employee.
Tonight would have been a good night.
It would have been charged for weeks, you know, it's going. But anyways, it just, just, you know, there's no place for someone to go there. And then if you're at the school, unless you're a school student or a school employee, you don't have anywhere to go because you can't go into school. So again, you're kind of stuck in your car. So I'm, I'm not gonna argue it. I'm just saying, I'm just wondering about the, how, why that was picked. Because usually you put them in places where people can do something while their car is charged. We can look at whether there are other alternatives. And there may be the opportunity for additional charging stations to do. But if you said we're gonna start getting electric vehicles and we have to charge them up here, that would be a good reason to put them there. You know, that would make good sense. Not that we're not intending to do that, but there isn't an immediate plan to do that yet. And then, Chair, yeah, and just one more thing. On the accessory dwelling unit, I appreciate the 49 pages of information. I think it's, it doesn't appear that the CPC is going to.
I will be speaking on that. It's open business, just, so.
You'll be waiting for that?
I do have information.
Okay, okay. I'll wait to hear that. Thank you.
I'm done.
Oh, you're all done?
I am, yep.
Then why don't I start with open business?
Sure.
So I had a conversation with the chair of the CPC, Warren. And we had a great conversation. We talked about a joint meeting and trying to make that work and actually decided that we would rather have what we would call a workshop so that it's not at anybody's meeting, it's not on an agenda, we're not feeling rushed. So the town planner is gonna look at off Tuesday nights and off Monday nights, throw out some dates and try to get us together for a workshop.
Tea and crumpets to be served. I don't, I like workshops.
You can put your request in.
Generally, you get fed, you know.
So just waiting to hear for, on those dates and then we can, we can discuss and try to nail something down.
Okay, can I make a suggestion? Because if you read through the 49 pages, it's, if you're like me, it was hard to, really hard to follow. And so, you know, I saw that was evolution historically. What I think we should do to be prepared for that meeting is that there's 90 communities in Massachusetts that already have accessory dwelling unit policies. I'm suggesting that, and what I understand is that a third of them, they created a policy that no one's utilizing, so that hasn't worked out. Another third of them, they've had moderate utilization and another third has really good success. I'm suggesting before we have this meeting that the town planner, and I'm happy to help, is that we identify best practices about what has worked in other communities. Because we're not unique, we're not new, we're not the first page. Let's do little best practices so we can break out of this, you know, what I see is a lot of little detail, but the big picture seems to be missed from what I'm looking at. So I'm suggesting that we take the time to do best practices. That way we can kind of see what other communities have done. I think the only model they've gone to so far has been redding. There's other models out there besides just redding. And let's find out what's common. Let's find out what's worked in other communities. Let that be one of our guiding principles for all of us to move forward. So I'm suggesting that if that requires me to do that alone, I guess I will, but I prefer to do that with a cooperation with town planner. Madam Chair, I think, it sounds like there's been a conversation with Mr. Pierce. I don't have any problem with arranging a conversation with the town planner to try to work through that, assuming nobody objects to it here. I would imagine the planning commission would be supportive as well. So I can reach out to the town planner? Yeah, I'll let her know tomorrow that you're gonna, you're reaching out to her. Great, I'm happy to help her do that. I'm not gonna just. And I think she shares, by the way, the sentiment that let's try to just put it in, you know, what are the issues that we need to be talking about? Yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Manu Pelli.
I know you, you presented this as a workshop. It's a workshop of who? Who's going to be at the workshop?
The CPC and the select board. And the town planner. The town planner.
The building commissioner.
The building commissioner will be there.
And Madam Chair, though, and I'm sure, I'm sure the TA told you, though, that, that has to be a posted meeting, so.
Yeah, well, first we have to.
We're gonna be getting together as a meeting. We, it has to be posted anyway, so why would we do that on an off night? Why aren't we just putting it on our agenda to meet, pick a night that we can meet together with them?
It's gonna take a night.
Yeah, Mr. Pierce and I felt, really felt that it's gonna be quite a discussion and we don't want it to be on an agenda at either meeting. We just felt it was better to make it a separate thing, that we're not constrained to, to time and we can really let the conversation.
You are, you have to follow the open meeting law. And if our board is meeting with their board.
We can do that.
You, you, you are gonna be constrained to what public meeting times, et cetera. It's gonna be a meeting on the two boards.
Right.
It's a joint workshop between the two boards. The agenda, I don't be talking about accessory dwelling unit by law, that's all.
Right.
Be open to the public.
And we have long meetings, so.
Yeah.
They do too.
Right, so that was, that.
Yeah, they are as long as we are.[1778.84]
Feeling was to not try to put it on one of our agendas.
Yeah, it requires thought.
Yeah, we wanted it to be just the focus, so.
No, it has to be, it has to be a posted agenda, even if it's called a workshop.
Yeah, nobody's arguing that.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, so why would we do that on an off night?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we?
Because we're already in other meetings on off nights.
Can I comment?
Well, we're going to, we're going to put out some, several dates and try to find a night that we can all agree on.
One, Madam Chair.
I'll present that to the board, like, we'll, we'll try to narrow down the two boards and what night that would be a good night for us all to meet.
Can I just comment? Yeah, it's going to take, I mean, to prepare for that meeting, I, I would like to talk to Danielle about how long it's going to take us to do a best practices thing, and when we have that ready, then it would be like, when we think we're going to be ready, then we could say, okay, at this point, we're ready to present that information. So don't set up a meeting in the next month, because we won't, I don't think we'll be ready in the next month.
I mean, I don't think you have to create a presentation necessarily.
It's a summary, it's a summary of what we learned from best practices. I think it's going to help set the right tone.
Okay, Mrs. Manu Pelley, so it's not going to be just, you know, I'm throwing one date. There's going to be several dates and we're going to try to narrow it down. And then we will post it.
Yep, okay, okay.
All right, old and new business, Mr. O'Leary.
Well, first and foremost, again, thank you for including that accessory dwelling unit. I did plow through it a couple of different times and figured out that it was chronologically how it was progressing, which was, which was good. I had to read it a couple of times, but that's all right. And again, I appreciated the information and I appreciate you facilitating a meeting with them, because I think it's important, it's great. The other thing, DOR guidance we got today on, we got, at least I got an email, because I think I'm on the board today, that's why. Basically, in relation to tax title foreclosures and what can be done with the funds, and basically they just said, they're okay if you set up a separate fund or hold in abeyance the time being until it's resolved in the courts.
Okay, I haven't reviewed that yet.
Okay, but that came in today, and that was a question we had with a piece of parcel that someone's looking to purchase, what happens with the money.
Yeah.
It's going to be a while, but they just said, okay, you can put it in a separate account and we'll worry about it later.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing, so it doesn't stop any progress of the money. To my colleagues who appointed Mr. Cazaza this evening, I didn't speak up, but if I were sitting here and participating, he's a fine fellow, terrific guy, he's going to be a wonderful addition to the committee, a huge asset, and as grateful as I am for everybody else that volunteers for town committees and things like that, he's going to be a great addition. He's a terrific fellow. He's a former employee here.
Oh.
Years ago, a 35-year member of the community and active participant in the town meeting, knows what's going on and knows his stuff.
Oh, that's great to hear.
So he's good, terrific. So congratulations on your appointment that you made, that was good. And as I mentioned earlier, I had had some recent conversation with Redding Municipal Light, Mr. Alila, and, and Greg Phipps, who's the new second director down there, in relation to the chargers and also solar canopies and things of that nature. There's a lot of money available now through federal government, through the federal government, for them to move forward and participate and get more money available now under the recently passed legislation, where before, cities and towns and municipal light departments weren't eligible for. So they're very excited about moving forward. I'm going to be talking with them again, and I think if we can facilitate getting him on an agenda at some, at some point, he'd be more than happy to come, make a presentation and tell us what's new and what's available and what we can do, and what their plans are, how they have to comply with certain requirements moving forward, and this would dovetail nicely, they're willing to partner with communities to do certain things with a certain goal, so. Good stuff, and again, I reached out to them because, again, I was thinking maybe opera money, where we can take the opera money and parlay it into more federal money, so the return on the investment would be huge, but we don't have any money left. But it's still worth the investment. And other than that, accessory dwelling charges, we're good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I think to potentially help you out, the recycle committee is going to be coming back to us to repurpose themselves.
Right.
As a sustainability committee, and they would, I think they're very excited to help do this kind of thing.
Absolutely, yeah.
You should feel free to.
Yep.
Let them know what's going on, but I think at the next meeting, I think they're going to come up with their proposal for us to formally say.
That's good, yeah, that's a good job.
They'd like to, they really want to help out and do that.
You know, and as far as charges, I mean, we, Redding Light will install them, again,[1657.06]